Commissioner, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Harris and Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor.
I prefer they can take in the good ones.
Maybe like?
They can take the next one. I can hear you. No, I think that's Tom. Tom, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Just like, just like the regular rule. And take a look at your goodie box from our insurance company, it's got some cool things in there. I've been, I've been paying with those toys on.
The tissue? I'm glad I can. It's always like this. But there is, there is a way. Um, I mean, I'm not supposed to say no.
I feel like you did yourself right.
I'm not sure. I think he would have heard it now.
Hi, Green. Hi, Adam.
Hi.
Hi, Eve.
Hi, Dom.
What's going to be challenging, when you speak, you, you're probably going to have to get really close to your mic. Very, very close, because we were having this challenge, um, yesterday.
Yeah, I can hear you when you get close to the mic, are you able to hear me as well?
Yes, I can see.
Okay. I can hear you as well, City Manager and, uh, Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Do we have a clerk that's recording or following the roll or anything?
Uh, City Clerk should be on there for roll call.
Yes, hello. Are you ready?
It's, 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 this is new, we're trying to work this out, so we tested it yesterday and it worked pretty well, so maybe just some of the microphones, we need to adjust the gain on them.
I will take the roll if you are ready.
Go ahead.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Oddman?
Here.
Commissioner Brandimart?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
City Attorney Ansborough?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You have a presentation for us?
Yes, Mayor, we start with a, with a bit of a, of a short preamble, and then I am going to turn it over to our Finance Director. Um, we have the rest of the team in the anteroom, because we didn't want to have more than ten people at a time, so that's when they'll come over here, they'll answer any relevant ceiling questions that, that you have in regards to the budget. So basically, um, this current budget is two million dollars less than the adopted 2018, 2019. So what we've done for the past year, year and a half, has really been observations, um, assessments, conversations with you, um, conversations with all the department directors. And what we've created here has been a hybrid of, of a budget. Um, it has the general fund, all the different funds, um, according to our, our city charter. Um, we've created an additional fund this year, which is the sanitation fund, so it's not commingled, so we're able to actually see the true cost and actually build reserves. Um, what we've also done in this budget is giving you all a menu for capital projects and one-time expenditures. In addition to that, conversations that we've had with you, we've also set aside five hundred thousand... In addition to that, conversations that we've had with you, we've also set aside $500,000 that you all could decide to use any way you would want. We didn't want you guys to come in and say, well, the budget is done. What's the purpose? Well, we've worked for the past two years to take our reserves to new heights. So the $2.25 million reserves, even with the recommendations that we're making and, and an additional half a million dollars that you all could decide how you want to use, it still leaves us a $20 million, very, very healthy reserve above the standard that we have set here for the city. The two loans that we're proposing in a time where interest rates are very low is to look and do two global projects. One is a result of this year's lighting assessment. So we can actually do a citywide lighting initiative rather than piecemealing. The other one, the other loan that we're recommending is to turn over our meter reading to smart meter reading. Where basically residents can, can gauge their accounts. They can determine if there's a leak. We would save $80,000 a year because we have an outsourced company that we pay $80,000 for meter reading. And we can actually tie into that infrastructure and be able to do citywide Wi-Fi. Another benefit that we can propose to our community. There's a couple of key positions that Frank will get into more details that these positions are either tied to necessary service, be it to our external or internal customers or additional programming and, and infrastructure protection. In the past, we have not done a good job of taking care of our facilities. Hence the challenges that we've had in the West Wing, Nyberg Swanson. And this position in public services will help us to have a working supervisor and we can augment the team of Joe and Logan. So this is a, a balanced budget. A budget that gives you the opportunity to allocate an additional 500,000 if you, if you would want to or not. And a budget that addresses citywide global initiatives that makes us safer, more beautiful, focusing on our external and internal customers. And with that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director.
Thank you, Manager Garcia. And again, I just want to reiterate that the budget does propose utilizing a approximately $2 million of citywide, I'm sorry, of general fund reserves. This is money that was accumulated over the past several years due to a number of factors, but the most important one being the economic upswing that followed the 2008, 2009 recession. So the city has built up a healthy reserve far in excess of its, of its 25, 20 to 25% target reserve in the general fund. And there are a lot of projects that need significant investment in the city right now. So the budget reflects that. It reflects not only projects, but also additional studies for other areas like the stormwater drainage system as well as the beach. And, and, and the two big key projects that we're looking to finance, as was mentioned, was the citywide lighting and the water sewer. It's called the advanced metering infrastructure. That's AMI. And both of those would be financed over a 10-year period at a low interest rate, probably around 2%. So at this time with, with interest rates so low, it's, it's very advantageous for the city to make investments, big investments like this in the city and, and be able to reap the benefit of, of borrowing money at such a low rate. And in addition to those, those two big projects, the, the other uses of fund balance are, are for some. Some of the items are very necessary. Some of the items are, are up for discussion. Nothing in the budget that's here is set in stone and, and this budget, that's, that's the purpose of having the workshop today. These are the recommendations of all the city directors, the city administration. But ultimately, this is all, this is a workshop and this is, this is why we're here is to work through and ensure that all these things are, are, are the most important things that need to be done for the city in the coming fiscal year. We have had neglected facilities and, and that staff position that's proposed for facilities foreman has been requested by the Public Services Director. And it will tie together both supervision of the maintenance of the facilities and the actual work getting done to ensure that there is no neglected dark corners in buildings and storage rooms that are being used as basically junk piles that no one looks at. And, and the next thing you know, we not only have to do repairs to remediate mold, we have to throw away stuff that we weren't planning on throwing away. So we don't want to do that anymore. We want to make sure that our facilities are in pristine condition at all times and that they're being maintained properly. There's also a position for human resources for a generalist, additional generalist role that would really support the activities that have been, that have been pushed by the city administration to not only recruit, but retain the most qualified and the best government employees in, in South Florida. And in order to do that, we have to have people to be able to train them and ensure that they're doing their trainings, ensure that they're working safely and ensure that they're following city procedures as well as exploring and, and updating our benefit programs to make sure that we offer the best benefits to our employees that we can. So there were some changes that were recently done to the health plan that are going to take effect on October 1, which are a, a, a big shift from the way we've been doing business here for quite a long time. And they will provide a lot more options to employees who are looking to maximize the health plan options that we have here at the city. Another position that's been requested is the Assistant Director of Recreation, which that's, that's one that's been requested for some time. And that, that is being, that position is going to be critical to assist Eric Brown, the Recreation Director. He's, he's a veteran employee of, of Recreation. He knows this stuff, but he needs help. He needs support. He needs eyes and ears out there. We have a very robust recreation program in the city and it's being expanded. So in order to expand and offer new programs like the one that's proposed in the budget for the, the PAL, you know, the, the teen after-school program, we need help and that Assistant Director is going to work on that. That's going to be their, their project. So those two really are tied together and you can't have one without the other. So there's also a few, few other requests that have been put in the budget for approximately $900,000 use of, of reserves for every one of the city parks as well as updating or doing architectural analysis of the Nyberg Swanson building as well as $250,000 seed money to do some improvements at City Hall in the West Wing, which again, that, that could be 150,000, it could be 350,000. And, and again, it's, it's really just a matter of putting a placeholder out there to give the, the city commission the ability to do something and, and continue to talk about the plan and come up with a plan that works best for both the elected officials and for the city employees. So we want you to consider that as well. And, and in addition to the, the Nyberg Swanson House, that's the 55,000, $5,000 architectural assessment. We're asking for an additional 43,000 that hasn't been put in the budget. That would cover the women's club. So the, the total would be about 98,000 to do a full assessment of both of those historic buildings to ensure that we know exactly what the structural integrity is of those facilities and understand what it would take and what the cost would be to possibly move them to another site at some point to be able to open up development downtown in Dania Beach. One more thing that I wanted to mention that has not been requested in the budget, as we've been working through this budget process, it, it really has been a work in progress, even though we put out the budget a few weeks ago. And in talking with our Public Services Director and our Community Development Director, we need a few more vehicles. Couple of them are replacements, but ultimately we have a very dynamic workforce that need to be out in the field. They need mobility. And we're requesting a vehicle for the facilities foreman. That's a new position that they can't work without a vehicle. So we're going to need that as well as for the, the Community Development Administrative Staff to be out in the field visiting construction sites and meeting with developers. So they need a vehicle and we also need a, a new, gosh, it's escaping me right now. We need a, a dump truck and that was one that for, for, it just was overlooked in the budget, but we've been talking with the fleet manager and that's something that we, we really need to purchase at this point. And then we also need a vehicle for the Deputy Director of Public Services. And he currently, they currently have a vehicle. It's, it's a lot older and that will be repurposed for another area of the city where there's a need. So that, that total request is about 175,000 of additional funds that are not already requested in the budget. And again, we, we have a strong fund balance in the city. We know that the FEMA money that has come in this year is approximately $800,000. And we're, we're anticipating another approximately $1 million before the end of the fiscal year, if not shortly thereafter. We're, we're still working with the Florida Division of Emergency Management to recover those funds. But they have been obligated. So we're just waiting to finalize things and we should be receiving those funds soon. And that, that was supposed to replace the disaster reserve that was taken from Irma, but the good thing is the city's already done that. So, so these funds are coming in and if we don't spend them, they just go down to fund balance. But, but the key here is to take those funds and reinvest them into the city and, and do some much-needed projects that have been delayed for quite some time. So with that, I think we covered it. I'm going to turn it back to the City Manager.
Yeah. In, in closing, before we turn it over to you, it's, it's your workshop. So we, we took that budget cut last year of $2 million because what we wanted to do this year is really assess and then move forward with all these, you know, lighting assessments, master plans. And in May 2020, 21, the year where the future is now and we begin to have those studies become actual tangible projects and, and benefits to, to our community. So that's why we're calling this budget, "The Future Is Now" and it's the Renaissance of Dania Beach and now after COVID, the recovery of, of Dania Beach. So we believe that, that this budget is the most comprehensive, the most beneficial budget from a global perspective, from, from a benefit perspective, from, from programming and from actually seeing things done, not being piecemealed, but being done and impacted citywide. With that, I turn it over to you.
Do you want us to just jump in or are we asking questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor. What page was this, is the city, the, the Wi-Fi project that we're talking about on?
Yes. Can, can you reflect on the budget where we have the, the AMI?
Yes, so the,
In the budget?
Yeah, it's, well, the capital improvement plan is going to be on page, 18. It's, it's listed there. There's a, there's also a,
Which, which one is it under?
It's under Capital Projects Plan. If you slide down to the,
I'm having trouble seeing with, with close-up with, with this thing's getting plugged up.
Yeah, not seeing it there, but I can tell you that it's in, we have a capital projects request form that's in the water fund section. That's page 120 of the budget. And it's been reflected in the budget numbers for some, I think maybe that row is hidden on the, on the capital project spreadsheet that's here in the budget. But it's a two-point, it's a, it's a $1.7 million project. And the, the key is that it's going to, it's going to basically enable full connectivity from the office to every single water meter in the city and allow residents to actually view their water consumption real time and see exactly what's going on. So when, when people, people usually find out that they have a leak in their home, it's usually a month after when the billing's already done and they kind of owe the money already. This would indicate alerts real time if somebody's using excessive consumption and we can get notified and let them know, hey, there's an issue going on on your property. And they'll say, oh yeah, I'm just filling up my pool or whatever the case, or maybe it's a leak. So that, that's one benefit of it. The other benefit is it allows for leak detection on the city side as well. It allows for flow measurements on the sewer lines to ensure that, that the sewer flow is working properly. And it also would provide the backbone for the citywide Wi-Fi because you,
Oh, that's what I was asking about. I was specifically asking, because I, I also have it on, on the, the online one too, and I don't see the line, I don't, the, the item on any, in any, that, under any of the departments for capital, for the capital plan.
If you go to page 120, there's a capital improvement form.
Okay. So yeah, I was asking like specifically, I'm sorry, you said page 121?
120.
120.
Who was also in the, in the management message, right?
About the city, about the citywide Wi-Fi. Because you were talking about it primarily in relation to it with the real-time water information and things like that. What are we looking at it in terms of what it's for the city? Is the entire city going to be getting the, the Wi-Fi? Is that what the goal is? Because I just, so I researched it and I see that there's several different ways that, that cities have laid out that plan. So I'm just trying to get an idea of, of what we were looking of doing with it.
The, the water, the infrastructure that's required for this system will allow for multiple connections on the same devices. So the same device that's going to collect meter readings from the surrounding area can also be utilized as a wireless access point. And we have control over who can connect to that, how they connect to it, if there's a cost for that. But this is something that the, the infrastructure for the water AMI system will provide the opportunity to add on that Wi-Fi. The consultant that we've discussed this with, who, who is our consultant for, for all of our water meters currently, we talked to him about our meter reading and everything. And he said that there's a few cities that are already going down this path. The, the infrastructure is capable of handling this. And in addition to the, the units that'll be installed at most of the city lift stations, they'll probably be installed with the, with the street lighting as well and to, to be able to provide the coverage necessary for that Wi-Fi connectivity.
Okay. So this is primarily, this is for the sewer infrastructure. I, I think when we first talked about it, we, or at least I assume we were looking at it more as like, you know, some cities, they say, come connect to our Wi-Fi and it's for people, you know, to check their email, to do all these other things. Although from what I, I understand, it's actually very limited in that, you know, what, you can't stream anything on it and so many of the services that now we use are so data-heavy that at least offering public Wi-Fi as sort of an amenity of the, of the city for that purpose usually is disappointing, you know, for, for residents. But if you're saying it's tied in, it's primary, primary use is for this, it's for the meter, the, the new metering system.
Correct.
That's correct. Okay. You have a question that tags onto that? Yeah, go ahead.
So yeah, now, now I'm a little confused as well. I remember a couple of, well, maybe a year ago in the City Manager's office and we also spoke about like Wi-Fi for, not for this specific use, but also just for our normal residents or, or inviting people to come in because we have Wi-Fi. We also addressed the fact that, you know, I may have Wi-Fi here, but if I go out in the parking lot, I don't have Wi-Fi. And so is that not what this is? Is, is 1.7 not going to be for our residents to be able to work from home or check an email or have a business meeting at one of our parks or, you know, not to stream movies or stream your meetings and things like that, but you know, some, an amenity for our residents other than just water utility? Is that something that can be, what is the cost for that? Is that in this 1.7 million or is that an additional cost or was that not even thought? I, I want to know the details on it.
The, the first, the first step is, so if we were to install citywide Wi-Fi but for no other purpose, it would be extremely expensive and it would only provide the Wi-Fi benefit. So what this does is it allows us to put in the backbone for the utility. There may be an additional cost to scale up to do the Wi-Fi citywide. The devices that will be installed will provide coverage throughout the city because all the, the, the water meters are going to have to connect to it. So there will be pretty blanket coverage already citywide. Adding on the Wi-Fi piece is ju, it's just like a next step, but we're working that into the overall bid of what's going to be put out, the, the specs that are going to be put out for the system. So it's going to be blended in with the, the initial phase of providing the, the water meter reading.
Can, can you bring me a cost estimate for what it would cost to have not citywide Wi-Fi? I wouldn't categorize it as that, but for our city facilities or anything that is on our city property to be able to encompass Wi-Fi. That, that would be, you know, my recommendation or suggestion to add to this 1.7 million dollars so that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a better benefit for our residents.
We, we have that plan. It's in the budget this year, actually, fiscal year 1920. And we, Monica and I were just talking with a vendor about a week or two ago about that. They refreshed the quote for us. I don't want to give you the wrong numbers, but it was somewhere in the neighborhood of about $40,000 for a one-time purchase of the equipment necessary. This would be at the parks. We already have Wi-Fi at the city facilities for public use, but this would be specifically at the outside areas of the parks.
What about our beach?
Um, do we do beach as well on that, Monica?
I remember Joe was working on it.
I can't hear you.
We are right now also working on upgrading the wireless devices at the beach for that capability. And this system would also, that the other part that we're talking about would also provide that.
So Commissioner, we have monies in these budgets to extend beyond the buildings of parks. What we're proposing is to install the infrastructure to be able to expand that in the future if you should want to.
I understand that, but this 1.7 doesn't embody us being able to have Wi-Fi, you know, as the Vice Mayor was saying. You know, Frank just said it would be an additional cost. So I know, I understand that 1.7 is the infrastructure, but if we're going to do the project, I want to do the project and not just do one part of the project and then wait two years down the road so we can add the extra, you know, benefit of the other part of it.
Well, and what we can do, what we were thinking is, we can't go to step two without taking the phase one, which is installing the infrastructure and then all the benefits that come with a smart meter. What we could always do is go back and mid-year, or as we're working with this company or these two companies that we've been talking with, is coming back and say, if you want to hook on to the existing infrastructure that now is in place, it's going to cost X.
They can't give you that quote now so you don't have to come back mid-year and just work through it.
We planned to spec that out when we put out the bid for the water meter AMI system to be able to add on the additional devices to create the Wi-Fi for public use. But what I want to, the reason why we're going this route is because if we just want to install the infrastructure for citywide Wi-Fi, we're going to have to pay a lot of money for equipment and then for ongoing monthly costs. But we, but it's just going to literally be a cost that hits our bottom line with no way to, no revenue coming in. If we, if we do this through the water fund, through the AMI system that we're proposing, the cost savings from switching from meter reading to an automated system virtually pays for that whole system. The whole 1.7, we're going to finance over 10 years and the annual savings will cover the cost of that system. The added benefit is we can add on the Wi-Fi for what will be a nominal cost since the system's already in place and it's already paid for by the savings. So what we plan to do is when we put out this bid, add on as part of the bid spec, the ability to scale up and do the public Wi-Fi. That way we'll have it all laid out if we select a vendor and award a contract, what it'll cost to do that next phase.
The 80,000 that we're spending a year over 10 years, that's 800,000, not including a couple of the employees that we can shift from meter reading to other essential parts of our operation. So like Frank says, this 10-year investment pays for itself for the savings.
So basically, what you're putting in the structure, you're putting in the infrastructure, it's on, can you hear me? Okay. You're putting in the infrastructure, you're putting in the basic equipment. We start off with the basic Wi-Fi and then over time, if we want to upgrade that based upon savings that we have over time, then we may potentially be able to upgrade it to offer additional services as time goes on because we're saving the seed cost savings.
Correct.
Is that my understanding? Okay.
And we're also looking at, we don't, we won't know 100% where there may be dead spots in the coverage and the connectivity. Once the system is in and they can measure certain areas, okay, we just need to add on an extender over here because we're not getting coverage. We need to add an extender over there. So just the first phase would probably provide some Wi-Fi around the areas where those devices are being installed for the water meters. And then we can come back and look at where do we need to fill in to dead spots to make sure we have the blanket or the coverage that is what's wanted by the residents and by the city commissioner.
Commissioner Brandimart?
You know, you started this meeting off with the fact that the budget is two, more than $2 million less than last year. I too was naive enough to think that besides doing this budget for the, for us with these items that you have, these line items, that when you said about it being about the Wi-Fi, I too also thought that it was something that we were going to bring back to our residents and they would be thrilled over. They really would be. And even down the beach where it would be a basic necessity. What I don't understand is, and I still don't, even with your explanation, why we can't put it into this budget since you started off with, we're $2 million less than last year. Why can't we fit it in?
We're $2 million, excuse me, we're $2 million less in this current fiscal year budget that we're in now that ends September the 30th that we were in fiscal 2018, 2019. What Frank was trying to explain, and I know it's challenging because at first I didn't understand it myself, we're putting in the infrastructure. Let's say that this is what we need to be able to connect this to this to be able to take the next step.
But Anna, it won't get followed through with. I'll make that prediction right now. The water, your meters, you'll have your life easy, but I bet you our residents don't get the Wi-Fi. It won't be followed through.
Commissioner, this administration is not about not following through because if not, we wouldn't be coming here telling you that we have done our citywide assessment of lighting and now this year, we're actually able to put the money in for the entire city to get the Wi-Fi. I mean, I'm sorry, the-
Well, may I? So let's just say worst case scenario, though, it wasn't followed through. Maybe a COVID-20 comes. We still are getting the benefits of the infrastructure for the purposes of the water utility. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I think kind of just what the disconnect was, at least for me, when I think of the public Wi-Fi item or the public Wi-Fi as it was said, I was thinking about it in terms of how it was rolled out in Austin and some other cities where, I guess like Commissioner Brandimart is saying, it's the Wi-Fi for the residents and, you know, how good it is for them, I don't know. But that idea versus what you're saying this is. And so I get it. It's just a disconnect from what the expectation was of what it was going to be versus what it is. But hopefully it will still be followed through on and it won't just be for the benefit of the water meters and eventually we can bring it for the residents. Because I'd imagine all cities or many cities are going in that, in that direction where there's an understanding that Wi-Fi, just like phones really, are now a, almost like a human right. You can't be expected to get a job or do any of the most basic things that you need to do to exist in this country without access, at least on the most basic level, to Wi-Fi.
And you know, Vice Mayor, I totally agree because I don't want any of you to think that we want to put something in there, but not having the end goal of achieving what you all want. Remember when I started the meeting, I said, oh, and by the way, there's an additional half a million dollars that you guys could say, hey, put a placeholder for 250 or put a placeholder for the whole 500. Because once we, once we get to quotes, we'll come back to you and say, hey, it's going to cost an additional 300,000 or it's going to cost an additional 250 so we can move forward with the secondary step. Because if that is your goal, then that's our directive and those are our marching orders.
To, just to give you the full transparency of it, we've been talking with our vendor, with our consultant, and we initially discussed the price of around 1.7 million. Initially one and a half, we put 1.7. He spoke more with his team and they looked at our, they called the population, all of our meters and everything, and they think it can be done for 1.5. So we have 1.7 in here. So that already leaves, I look at this contingency. I mean, a lot of big projects like that, we always build in maybe a 10% contingency just for issues. But I think we already have a little bit of extra funding built in there that we could do this with the 1.7, including at least the beginning phase of the public Wi-Fi. And then like I said, if we need additional dollars six months, a year after that to cover in empty, you know, gaps, areas, we can do that. But the key really is getting that infrastructure in place opens the door to the Wi-Fi. If we don't do it for the meters and realize those cost savings, then we literally just writing a check to do this with no way to cover that cost.
We hear you loud and clear.
Anything else anyone wants to bring up right now? Thank you, Commissioner James.
Thank you. One of the areas that I have an issue with supporting will be an additional generalist. We just upgraded the secretary's position in April or whatever. I don't know what the exact job title was, to a generalist, which was, I believe, a $7,000 cost impact. And now we're going to add another generalist and we don't have a secretary. That's something. And on top of that, in the budget for the, for the position that was upgraded, we're also budgeting an additional $8,000 for a master's program for this employee. I wanted to know what the policy is. Is this part of a reimbursement policy? Or I wanted to know, I think I tried to send in an email to try to figure out what the policy is for our employees. I know this employee in, or this position is not in a CBA. So I'm unsure if we're just offering master's programs for all of our employees and we're going to cover it or how that is going to work. But I definitely, I would like to remove one of those HR generalist positions. I think if we needed an additional position, maybe it can be the secretary, but to have three generalists and a director, that's not something I'm supporting at this time.
So we're here as, as the operations people and you're there as a policymaker. So this recommendation, and we can bring in the HR director. We have had some challenges in HR, going back to the audit before some of us were even here. The files were a mess. We weren't doing things to the level and the standard that we should be doing. Everything starts with the employees. So when we have somebody come into any department, we have them do the assessment. That individual that you were referring to as a secretary was really never a secretary. And if that position is in any of our budgets, please let's remove it. I mean, secretaries were secretaries in 1974. When you have a small team, everybody has to put on a hat to handle the demands. So we can bring in our HR director and discuss this, but we have spent the past four months going over everything and the needs with all the department directors. So when Frank and I, and we've gone through so many iterations and so many routes, this is basically to take our workforce to new heights, to make sure that everybody that we retain or we recruit or that we hire has all the training. The documentation, the documentation when it comes to HR and everything that we do in HR sets the tone for all of our organization. If it wasn't for the individual that we recruited to have as our HR director, we wouldn't be saving you $80 a month because you were paying an insurance cost that you shouldn't have been paying. And now we've been able to save money for the first time in the past six years because we have the right person in the right position and we have saved a considerable amount of money just in benefits alone. So this doesn't happen without having the right individuals, the right training. So-
Yeah, I wanted to ask my colleagues what they felt about it, having an additional generalist and, and I guess what Linda can address would be the program for the master's program that I've never seen in the budget before.
So I would, I would love to have Linda-
Yes.
-to speak on it. Because I don't, I don't understand the need for the position as well. So if you could help qualify that for me. And then also, the manager alluded to like that it was kind of a mess. And I know that there were some problems with the files being, you know, whatever, not how they should be in a perfect HR world. I mean, what does this new person, what do, what do they need to do that you can't do with you and the team that you, you have now? So that I can better understand like how to justify an entirely, the entirely new position. Thank you, Linda.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So just to go back to the health insurance a little bit. So there's a lot of things we can do other than be transactional, which for the most part, HR has been very transactional and hard to keep up with that just because of the paperwork. So we, for example, went out for RFP and as Frank had mentioned, we just had $165,000 savings for the city because we got to invest in an RFP, working with our broker. It's a 6.3% increase. Along with that savings, we're also bringing back, as you saw in the last commission memo, a number of enhancements to our benefits. So not only is it a savings, but we're bringing in the same plan with the same plan design, which is an excellent plan, but we're also adding a high deductible health plan. We're also going to, from a two-tier system to a three-tier system, which is going to result in many employees actually saving money in their health insurance and an opt-out provision. We spend on average $17,000 for one employee for health insurance. This is just one example of many of the things that HR can do besides process paper. But our, our HR, we have two HR generalists. They focus on different things. They are both professionals. They're at the same level. One focuses on recruitment and compensation. The other focuses on risk management and benefits. But you can't get past the transactional work without the appropriate staffing. And there's a lot more that we can do just from, just from the experience I have in history, knowing what we can bring to the table for the city. A lot of it can focus on, there's just numerous other training classes that we can do. These are big training classes, very time consuming to recruit and train our workforce. We want to be able to focus on that. We want to be able to focus on benefits and class and comp studies. And again, not just process what goes on. We want to be able to focus on proactive labor management processes. We have a union that we don't meet on a regular basis. We should. It's a great thing to do for the workforce. I'm used to meeting with unions at least once a month, working with them and having a system where we work together to make sure that we're addressing issues. There's a lot we can do in risk management that we don't do. We don't have the staff to go out and look at accident investigation areas where we should be able to do that. We don't do any subrogation activities where we're trying to collect when another party is at fault. We don't have a safety committee. We should. Safety committees are proactive. We just had a case on a sidewalk claim. Someone's asking for $125,000 from the city for a settlement. So one claim, one trip and fall on a sidewalk, we don't handle this the right way. This is where we are. We should be in a position where we can go out, look at the accident, prevent the accident, be working with the departments. Same thing with safety committee, meeting with employees and looking where we can prevent employee injuries. Our HRI system, we just brought self-service to the employees in the time I've been here. We also, for the last four months, have brought in a electronic open enrollment system, which you were invited first to see and attend. All these different things that we can bring to employees are going to enhance their quality of work, enhance what they're wanting to come to the city and work here. All the different things that we're trying to bring on onboarding, we don't have an onboarding system. When an employee comes on, we process their paperwork, send them to their department. We should have a complete onboarding program where you orient the employee to the city. Internship program. We just started an internship program, as you know, with George Alderman. This was somebody who contacted us and we reacted to it. We should be working with universities and going out and having a robust program where we can really do what we did with George, but in a more defined way. There would be lots of people who would love to come and work on an internship program. There's so much more we can do besides process paper. I, in the budget book, there's actually a list of all the activities under human resources and risk management that we're responsible for. The risk level in HR and risk, no pun intended, of making a mistake on someone's, and we also do payroll, which is unusual. But our HR team also does payroll. So the risk of making a mistake when you're rushing through things or not handling things exactly the way it should be, it puts, it can put the city at great risk. So there's, there is just so much more we can bring to the table besides processing paper. And to answer- And to answer your question, on the tuition reimbursement, that is for Chanel March, who's our generalist, who is looking to go into the master's program. And we do have tuition reimbursement programs for our employees. We have a proposed policy that we're reviewing that would pay for up to, I believe it's nine credits a semester for an employee and a reimbursement for books. So looking forward in the budget, knowing that she's going into that program, this is something that we would love to be able to offer to employees and that's why it's budgeted. But what we really have is a very basic HR department that processes paper. That's not where we want to be. To get where we want to go, we need to bring in the right staff and the right amount of staff. To give anymore to the people we have would not be a fair thing to do to them. It's, we're really at capacity just processing paper.
Well, so some of those things I know we had before, like the internship program we had under Paula, I know because I had an intern. And I think later on, Bill had or has an intern. I know some of the problems we had were, you know, with the, you know, I don't remember exactly what my complaint was, but maybe that it wasn't being posted at all the right universities and things like that. So I agree, it's having the right people in place, but I guess I'm still just not, some of the things you were saying seemed like things that we were doing. You know, when you're reading off that list, those weren't all novel ideas that have been in our HR department, at least since I've been here. Now, I could probably agree with you that maybe they haven't been done well, or as well as they could have been done, but then does that go more to the right person or to the right amount of people?
It goes to really both. So it's very easy to say, we're going to have, for example, a safety committee and meet one time and bring everybody together and have a great meeting. That's easy to do. What's hard to do is to continue that and to follow up and make sure that what happens in a safety committee is addressed and it's brought to the attention of the city manager or the directors that can do things. And the follow-up to that and the additional meetings and bringing in who you need to and purchasing maybe, you know, whether it's safety gear or PPE or whatever the recommendation is, but the continual practice of that, that's the hard part to keep things going. But we don't want to do anything partially. We want to make sure whatever we do, we do well. I would love to be able to focus on training. It's what I have done for 25 years. I've gone into wherever I've worked and a lot of focus on different coaching and counseling sessions, recruitment, how to get there, how to make sure we're getting compensation right for employees, helping managers understand basic employment laws. There's a lot we can do with that.
Sure.
But for me to sit and write a training program when I'm, you know, processing paper and looking up salaries, it's not the best expenditure of time.
I understand that. Do you feel that you, without this position, can you not run a safe, effective and comprehensive HR department without that position?
We can keep doing what we're doing. I don't think that the city is deserving of a HR department that just processes paper.
Well, I was not about them specifically. Would it be safe, effective and comprehensive?
Well, let me tell you this. There is a lot of compliance issues, as the manager mentioned. We were not, and we're still addressing them and identifying them. We are not testing CDL drivers. We're doing physicals for them. That's a federal mandate that we're not doing. We were not monitoring driver's license checks. The types of backgrounds we were doing, we just applied and got approval through the floor Department of Law Enforcement for certain backgrounds that are supposed to be done. There is a huge backlog, more than 10 years of filing that we've started on, but that needs to be, it needs to be really gone through for records retention laws. We can't afford to have a backlog of anything because when a public records request comes in, which is another function of HR, if we're not producing a whole file because we have a backlog of records, that's not, that's not a good thing to do. So we got caught up in the six months or so I've been here with that, but we still have a file room of boxes of things that need to go through records retention. There are a lot of systems that we can do to improve in HR. So we're already, for example, looking at integration between NeoGov, which is our recruitment system, and our enterprise system, which is New World. So for example, if we're doing a recruitment, the requisition has to be entered separately into New World. The systems don't talk to each other. We don't have a timekeeping system. We need a timekeeping system. We are in tremendous potential, I'll say, violation of the Fair Labor Standards Act because we're not, we're not tracking time. There's just so much we can do. I mean, I'm very excited to be here and be able to know what we can bring to the city, but we can't run our people into the ground either and have them working more hours than they're working because they're working a lot of hours. So we can, to answer your question, we can continue to do what we're doing, try to get in compliance, but we want to get this, we want to take this to the next level. I can get you there. I can take you there. I know how to do this, but we need to have the right staffing to get there.
Thank you, Commissioner James.
Yes, thank you. I have notes everywhere, sorry. I know that we have consultants all over this budget and I know that they embody a lot of things. I know that you mentioned timekeeping. That's something that's already budgeted, correct?
The timekeeping system is in our budget.
Okay, so that doesn't necessarily mean we need a generalist. And then all of these other, what did I write down? Anti-bullying, ethics, sexual harassment, that's already in the budget. I know that we also have consultants and I know that Tom maybe can enlighten the rest of us, that also help with risk management. I just don't know that a team of four, out of a team of four, three need to have the same exact title. Now, if you need additional help, if our HR needs additional assistance, and I went back and looked at my notes, the position wasn't labeled a secretary, it was the HR assistant. So my apologies for that. I would suggest that maybe you get an HR assistant to be able to do some of the technical things, to be able to do some of the paperwork, to be able to do some of, and maybe you groom them. And then when you grow the department, you have somebody that was being groomed. But I can't foresee supporting, out of four-person staff, three people with the same exact title when we already have in the budget so many other things that embodies the things that you're saying you want to do. So again, we already have in the budget, the courses, the sexual harassment, all these other things. What I did see in the budget, and I guess I can ask you, was what is the $3,500 for a management retreat that's in the budget? I don't understand why that's something in the budget. I don't know if, I also don't know if I want to support a management retreat. I don't know if I saw that in any other department.
Yeah, that's for the whole city that we budgeted that. That's not just for human resources, to a management retreat. But to answer your question, the right titles, the technical titles that we should use, I don't want you to get caught up on the titles. The right titles really would be technically the talent acquisition coordinator, the compensation coordinator and the risk and benefits coordinator. And in most places that I've been, those are the titles we've used. A title is kind of a meaningless thing, but the responsibility is the way we've broken them down. And if you've seen the new job descriptions, we've broken them down very specifically on what their tasks are. So if it would alleviate a concern, those would be the titles. Those are the areas of focus. Those are the specialty areas.
The titles are important to me because they're also tied to, you know, where you are on the pay grade and the costs associated with that title.
And those titles would be basically, these are comparable positions. If you call in other places again, a talent acquisition coordinator, a compensation coordinator and a risk and benefits coordinator, which would be technically what their titles are, would still be on the same pay grade. HR generalist is a term that's used to cover everything that they do, but I'm more accustomed to using those specific titles that I just mentioned to you. And I would, you know, have no issue changing the titles of the jobs, but the generalist covers all of those duties. But what you want to have is a specialist in those areas. So for example, recruitment. Recruitment, what we were doing is we were taking a job description and posting it, not posting it in Indeed and not posting it in some of the places where it should be. And we would get a small group of applicants. What we should be doing in HR is we should be the business partner. So if you have a position that you want to open, for example, we want to open Raquel's position. We should be meeting with her. We should be crafting with her what that should look like, what are her requirements for the job, what are the desires for the job and identifying them.
Linda, if I may, I want to jump in because I believe that Commissioner James has a point. And I'm from the school of administrative assistants should not just be scheduling and making copies. I think that we have an opportunity, not just in this position, but in all the rest of the positions that we have in our city with our executive assistants. Because in the past, you're right, and I could see what you would call them a secretary, but we shouldn't have that. We should have more expectations from a rec leader to an administrative assistant and groom those people. And who knows, maybe that assistant rises above our current generalists. So I would support and recommend, and that's why we're having this workshop, to amend that and maybe bringing the budget a little lower and bringing in an assistant that you could give us some of these other things. Because clearly, having Linda here has saved us already $165,000. So the return on that investment has been huge. Our telework policy, we're giving our telework policy to other cities in Broward because Linda brought it to the table, as well as what she's been able to do with the insurance, which has been a benefit for all of us. So I believe after this dialogue, we recognize that there's a need. I see it because we don't want to just dabble in HR. We want to make sure that we are evolving as a city and it starts with the workforce. So is that something that we could do is begin with an HR, you know, executive assistant or an assistant and then break up the responsibilities and raise the bar on the two existing employees plus this new individual?
I mean, we can certainly retitle them because they're doing that work now. Like again, a title is kind of not an important thing when it comes down to what the work is. Their work assignments on their job description, as you said, the new job description are very crystal clear. These are the duties for recruitment, these are the duties for comp, these are the duties for risk, these are the duties for benefits. And these are the other set of duties that are very time-consuming, like payroll, like public records requests, like filing, that are just the more general duties. So everyone is performing and they understand what that new job description looks like. So retitling the jobs is fine. This is the way that, you know, this has been done here. And again, when we're doing a compensation survey, we're not comparing job titles. You can call someone in one place a director and another place a coordinator, but they could be both performing the same job duties.
So in other words, what Commissioner James is saying, just because we've always called them that, that we don't continue to call them a generalist, you know, let's think outside the box because that's what we're doing here with this team of elected officials and this team of administrators.
That's a very good idea. That's more in line with what other municipalities and other private sector places do. And I would be, you know, very happy to retitle the position.
So can I bring back the recommendation so we can kind of move past this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I know, I'm not moving, I'm saying what mine is and then they can speak. So what I would recommend or what I would want is that we bring in an HR assistant that can do some of the other job duties and then we'll see how that works and then within the next budget, or if there is a need within the next budget, reassess it.
I think that's a fabulous idea.
Commissioner Branum, are you had your hand up?
I have a what?
You had your hand up.
Oh yeah, thank you. Linda, I was listening to everything you brought up there. It sounded like you would need 10 of them, but I like the assistant one and I'd go for that. My question to you is this, a lot of those problems you were talking about regarded like OSHA.
Exactly.
Exactly like OSHA. Tell me, once you realize that that's the problem there, who the heck in your department would be qualified to take care of OSHA?
Well, we're not technically covered by OSHA in a municipality.
I know, but you'd have those, what if you have those problems and you know what they are, because I know them.
Well, right, well, I mean, we have, we do have backgrounds in that. We also have a broker that we work with. We also have a legal that we can consult with on OSHA on any of the safety issues that come up. So between the experience that we already have in the department and people that we can go to that are experts, we can address any of those issues and we do. We just need to be able to do them more proactively. So when we have an employee who's in a workplace accident, it's not just submit the paperwork and we'll send it in. We need to go back and we need to look at it and see what happened. Why did it happen? How can we prevent it? What do we need to do to change this going forward? And is this a global change? Is something in the department? There's more you can do, a lot more you can do than just filing the accident.
One last question. Is it our attorneys that you use? Like, do you use Tom and the lady or when you have an OSHA situation, or do you have to go outside?
So for our liability issues, we work with our legal department.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harris.
I think, Linda, thanks for that presentation. Whatever we would have called that position, I think is great because this is the world that most folks want to be in. So I have a question. I think our HR department should be...
I think our HR department should be as ready as if we were in a hospital setting when we're waiting for JCO, Joint Commission. We should always be ready. And if Linda said she had a backlog of 10 years of work that was not done, well, that needs to be done or we could get dinged on that. There's going to be new requirements for CQI, for PPE, JCO, OSHA. So we don't know exactly what the future holds in our HR world as far as risk management, labor relations and training and accident investigation and all those things that you mentioned. So I think whatever we do to get a new person in there, we can make sure that they are also in a training capacity where they could bring everybody else up to the standards that will be the new standards for HR in a public municipal setting.
Yes, and I actually have a hospital healthcare background and I'm very familiar with it.
You know JCO.
I know JCO.
I mean, COVID has changed everything. At one point, we thought that we should spend $10 million on a new city hall because we needed 40,000 square feet. And now we're spending all this focus on COVID, getting people back to work, and everything that was aligned, it was centralized, a lot of it in HR.
And we don't really know what has fallen through the cracks since March the 17th and up until now. So there's going to be some catch-up work to do as well. And America can speak to that because of her experience in risk management and then the hospital setting with JCO. So I think we're all on the same page with having that new person, whatever we're going to call them, but a new HR person.
And that's kind of where I want to go with this. Whatever the position is, what it's advertised, we need to make sure that it's the appropriate position to get the appropriate person for it.
Correct.
Although you may not want to call it a generalist, you might want to call it something on a lower level. I don't just want to say just assistant because if you just say assistant, you could end up with somebody with no experience. I mean, we need to make sure that there are certain requirements that people that have some experience in the human resources field have worked in a human resources environment. Because you don't want to just have somebody that comes in that literally doesn't have the experience or the education, especially if you, I mean, although you need specialists in each field. No, it's not?
Yes.
Bring it closer. Oh, closer, okay. Better? Yes, no? I don't know.
Is it on?
I think it's on. Can you hear it?
Tap on?
Yeah, it's on, okay. It's just a mask. But I know you want to have specialists in each field, but I think it's also important that you have cross-training.
Yes.
Because if you have people, you can't just have people that only know one thing because God forbid something happens to that person or they leave or whatever. You need to make sure that there's some sort of depth. And the only way you're going to have that is if you have cross-training. So if you bring somebody in who has some experience, that maybe not as much as the other ladies that work in the department or the other, you know, anybody else like at a generalist level, but somebody that is trainable, somebody that can move up because they have some background in it already.
And we do a lot of cross-training. We spent actually a lot of time on that. I love training. It's one of my favorite areas of HR and I spend a lot of time with my employees, making sure that they're up to speed. For example, only one of them was doing payroll functions. They're both doing payroll functions. Only one of them had access to benefits. They both had access to benefits. Because we can't have someone go out and shut down a department, exactly to your point. The HR assistant title is not a title. That's a known title and it does, we would definitely want to use either a coordinator title or something that's more common in the HR industry.
A coordinator title?
Okay. Okay, so I guess I reiterate what I want consistent, to try and get consensus on so we can move forward. So starting midpoint, I would like to, not midpoint, mid-year, sorry. I would like to add the assistant HR direct, oh, Lord, the assistant HR position to the budget to start off.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If I have consensus from two others to be able to do that and bring back. Yes? Yes, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items? Anybody you'd like to discuss? I mean, I want to talk about the $500,000, but, you know. I want to talk about the $500,000 that's out there that we could use.
Okay. She says she wants to talk about the $500,000. I want to also, I think that we'll be able to save more money. I don't know, maybe public services. I know I spoke with the city manager and Frank on this. The $250,000 for a bridge design? I'm unsure how it got back on the budget. I do know that in speaking and when it was a topic of discussion and the community was involved, the community did not want that. And so I guess I wanted to know if there were any community meetings or such a reason to why this is back on. This bridge would be exactly one street over from the First Street Bridge that we already have. I know that when I was mayor, I signed something for the MPO to do improvements to Northwest First Street that they haven't even done yet. And I think that if we wanted to enhance the bridge that we already have to include people to walk over there or bike over there or whatever, I think that that would be more viable. But to take, to put another bridge on a street over on a street that doesn't have many businesses. So right now, we think about, I think about how many exits there already are to that neighborhood. There are at least five or six that I can count off the top of my head. Then I also think about what it would do to that community if you put a bridge there. You would take out, you know, traffic that will go through that thoroughfare. That is a corridor that we already need to enhance. A lot of it is zoned for multi-use or business purposes. Right now, when people are going from Dana Point to US-1 or wherever they're going, they're either taking Bryant Road to Sterling or Bryant Road to First Street. Both that highlights that neighborhood or on Sterling that highlights our businesses. I just, I am not in support of that bridge, especially if we have not gone to the community first and foremost and got the buy-in.
Vice Mayor.
May I? So I think Commissioner James is right on something. So maybe, I don't know, a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, I remember the majority of the neighborhood was against that bridge. And it's, you know, that's a long conversation about the effects of putting roads through communities, what that historically has done in gentrification and issues like that. I've heard from other people that now the tide has turned and people are more positive on it. But I think at the end of the day, you have to have some community meetings because that's not something you want to get wrong. And because I really don't know, I don't know anymore what the feelings are on it. So I think that that's something we definitely need to prioritize, is having those community meetings to find out, you know, what is the feeling? Maybe it is positive now, you know. I don't know, but we should find out.
And, you know, I totally agree. This was something that we inherited, myself, Frank, and Fernando. It was an MPO project. I've met, you know, with several folks that are working on different projects and including the project on Bryant and Sterling, former mayor Walter Duke. But I also think it's important to meet with the community. I know, Bill, you sit on the MPO. It was passed by the MPO. But we take our guidance from you all in regards to meetings with the community. This does connect Dana Beach Boulevard from the beach to Dana Point. But there's also several houses there that would be impacted. And maybe having that dialogue is beneficial. I believe communication is always beneficial. Commissioner James, you might have, be privy to some information that we're not. So if you guys want to have a meeting or have that discussion, absolutely.
Well, and I think, you know, and I don't know to what extent this could be done. When you look at that road, it does make sense that originally, if you could turn back time, that you would have put it on that road.
Correct.
Because what the warehouses instead of the road with the park. So, you know, the damage has been done, but I don't know what can be done. But there's really a big conversation to be had there. And that was a very hot topic three years ago. So, and I think maybe, maybe people have thought it's fallen by the wayside. But now that it's coming back up, this project that you spoke of is coming back up and it's back on the hot plate. People are going to be asking, all of us, you know, we're going to be getting calls and emails about where exactly do you stand on this? And are you willing to put a bridge in our neighborhood?
Let me start here. Frank had his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that, sort of the background on why this is in the budget. And back in September of 2019, the city commissioner approved a resolution that formalized the city's 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That was submitted to the MPO. A number of projects were on that list, one of them being the West Dana Beach Boulevard Corridor. This is a project that has been out there since before, I believe, the 2016 surtax vote, that when all the cities were putting together a project list for transportation projects. That was one of them. And it's on the city's MPO plan. And the essential, the idea is connecting US-1 to Bryant Road. Roadway improvements, intersection improvements, the bridge over the canal, signalization, improvements to the railroad crossing, and then finally, right-of-way acquisition, which would theoretically be the properties that would be impacted, that might need to be acquired. So again, I believe that the $480,000 plan that's being paid for by the surtax funds would look at the feasibility of the plan. It would look at the neighborhood. It would probably involve community meetings, workshops with the public, to even determine whether this is something that is going to be warranted and needed by the community ultimately.
Can we go to Commissioner Harris first?
As I recall, and Tom can probably speak to this, that it has been talked about for many, many years. And I think, I'm sure it's on the project list for 2026. It's already been funded through that time as part of the LRTP with the MPO and the, you know, the Sea Slip Program and all those other things. Because somebody brought up an important fact that in the event of an evacuation, for whatever reason, it would be one more street to get people out of the eastern suburbs and get them out west or north on I-95 or whatever. So currently, there's only the First Street. Is it First? No, it's Second. The Second Street Bridge that would help get people out.
First Street, First Street.
Yeah. And, but, you know, it's already funded. I think at one time when they were first talking about Dana Point, when I was on planning and zoning, I think Kimco was going to do the engineering and then the county would build a bridge. It's, the building cost alone is over $6 million. So all of those things can be looked at. But, you know, it's on the project list for 2026, which, you know, is still kind of far away. So, and with the additional development that we've also talked to, I talked to former mayor Walter Duke about, that it could be an integral part of the development that they foresee on Griffin Road. I mean, on Bryant Road, sorry. So Fernando, did you want to say something?
Commissioner Branum has something else.
Commissioner Branum, together.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Hey, Commissioner James.
I was on the commission when this was all talked about. And at the time, just to bring you up to par, not only was the point going to kick in, but so was the casino. And Commissioner Harris is right. We are only having one exit in order of a major disaster. And that's exactly what it was also going to help, was our residents to have a way to get out of here besides go there. But we were not footing the bill.
Correct.
We were not footing the bill. The bill was supposed to be with the casino because they figured it was a good road to come over. And also what was brought up was, I don't know why we're saying the people were against it because if I can recall, someone turned around, unless times have changed since then, and said that on that road there, there were only five homes. Now, I don't know how many homes are over there, but I am thinking about Saratoga. Will this affect Saratoga at all this new bridge? Maybe the mayor can answer that.
I'm actually thinking that maybe Fernando can answer that.
Is Saratoga going to be in trouble?
I do not believe so, no. But there are some properties closer to the bridge. I'm saying that would be affected by Saratoga, not to my knowledge, no.
Then is it true that there's only five homes there? So it would be an easy fix if that really comes to that, so long as you don't throw somebody out there.
The number I'm aware of is five homes, more or less, more or less.
But I can remember, I'm sure the memory's still there.
I think they actually reworked the plans, if I'm not mistaken, so that it's less than five homes now. It's not all five homes would be impacted, it would only be two or three. Commissioner James?
Yes, there are at least four or five homes before the patch that is over there. And I can tell you what the temperature is because I am from that neighborhood. They don't, they still don't want it. They haven't spoken to anyone that has said that this is something that the commission was bringing back to budget. I do remember when Walter and Al and yourself and Bobby Grace were on the commission. And I do know that there wasn't support to move forward then. And I do know from then to now, a lot, a lot has changed, including a lot of people have been displaced for different reasons, not from the city. But there is still not a desire to have that bridge. What that bridge is a direct line into gentrification. You exclude that neighborhood because you go straight from Dana Point straight to the beach. And I'm sure that's what people want to do. I'm sure that's what MPO wants to do. I'm sure that what people who don't live in that neighborhood would want. Listen, if that's what the neighborhood wants, I'm here to support what the neighborhood wants. But I'm not here to bring back an item that was very contentious. Very, it was a very hot topic. I think what we should do, if that's something that you want to do, is remove it from the budget and go out and get the buy-in from the community that I can assure you they're not going to want to buy into that. For instance, the last resident on that street, he's in his 80s, maybe? You're going to displace this resident and give him some money to start over again when it's already paved their household? And you give them an amount of money that, you know, maybe they paid $50,000 for their home all the way back in those times. You pay $50,000 and you give them $300,000 and they're happy. But what type of home are they going to get for $300,000 right now in 2020? I think about, those are longtime residents. Those aren't just residents that just moved there yesterday. And so I am very careful with something of this magnitude, bringing this forward or even putting this on the budget role without having already the buy-in from that community. That's something that I definitely, I will not, I will not support that. And I do think before it is in our budget that there should have been some support from this community that says, "Look, we already have some support from the community. Now, these are the next phases." And I just don't see that. I think that this is a cost that can wait, even if there is a new development. I've heard that the community didn't want that development. I don't know. I don't know what community, how many community meeting staff are having with the actual community. But I do know the temperature of that community. So it would be, and, you know, for me, I was talking to the city manager and Frank to remove this from the budget, $250,000 that we can do more meaningful programs that, you know, I'm not going to speak on right now. But there's a lot of things that we all want to do that can be very meaningful in the time of COVID, instead of talking about possibly displacing people. So what if it's four people that were displacing or five? I'm concerned about displacing one at the expense of me being on this commission.
And Commissioner, you're absolutely right. And that was a discussion that Frank and I were having. This is not in line until 2026. So basically, we have six years to talk about it.
I want to ask a question about that. So I'd like to do that? Can I ask a question, please?
Yes, of course.
Because I think it goes right into this. Frank, you were talking about the fact that there was something that was already approved back in September 2019, that it's already been funded through the MPO, correct?
Can we bring the mic?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
You already said that it was funded through the MPO, correct? They've been doing funding for that? Okay. So what I would like to know is, and I know you said that part of what they would do if they're going to move forward with this would be to have community meetings, presumably. That's what would happen. I'd like to know what the schedule is for this particular item. Is there something that needs to be done this year that's going to be impacted by this? So, I mean, do we have any idea? Maybe Commissioner Harris knows, being on the board. Is there something related to this particular item that's going to come up before the MPO that's going to need to be addressed by the MPO as far as funding or anything else? Are they relying on us to fund certain things in order to do the next step? That's what I want.
Okay, I don't have an answer to that question.
Steve, go ahead.
I can, you know, pretty much tell you that we need more information on this because it is, you know, funded on the 2026. I can see it on the lines there. But because the MPO hasn't, they had a virtual meeting in July and there's no meeting in August. Probably the next time we meet in September, I can get some more definitive answers for you guys or have the executive director from the MPO come and speak to us at a commission meeting as to what the process is and what the likelihood is that to happen in 2026. It could be 2030, it could be 2040 because the plan goes out to 2045. So it doesn't need to be now.
Isn't there also county input for this as well?
Yes.
I mean, because part of that isn't a county property.
Because of the waterways and the permits and everything that would go into that.
It's not just strictly city. It's also county. And the county may vote on something totally separate from us.
And the funding's probably federal, so it's a trickle-down.
I think, I do think we need more information on it. But I, and I feel like we don't, I don't know if we can get, if we can get the information before we actually have to vote on the budget or not. But I'd like to know what the plan is for the year, if it is something that we are required to put into our budget for some reason. Because if we are, I don't want to necessarily take it out if it's something that needs to be addressed at some point this year. If it doesn't need to be addressed this year, then we can pull it out. I just want to know.
Sure, I'll find out.
And I would make that recommendation that if you were to pass it just to put it in the, as a placeholder, that you put in an asterisk of some sort. But if you don't have to put it in the budget and we can back it out because we don't have to show it until 2021 or 2023, we would need that information.
Right.
I think Bill said 2045.
That's where it goes out to, the plan. I have a question for you, Bill.
The list that was approved about something we're not doing for this budget for now. My God, we've got so many more budgets to go through. I don't even know why it's in this.
But usually why things like this are put into budgets is because there's something anticipated in the coming year.
Yeah, capital planning would be one of them.
So that's, yeah, and that's one of those things that we're, that I just want to make sure that it's not going to be something because I have heard from people in the community that they would like this project, that they would like more access to the neighborhood and out of the neighborhood, in and out. So that's then what my experience has been. And I know there was some controversy about it in the past, but I don't think the controversy is as strong as it was in the past. In any event, Vice Mayor.
Well, then I think you just really gave an example of why, you know, you need to have the meetings about these things. If one commissioner hears that the people are staunchly against it and you're saying that you hear that people are for it. But, you know, when we talk about why it's important about either taking it out now or whatever, you know, these are the exact kinds of decisions. And they always say, "The big decisions that affect your life, you're not in the room when it happens." This is the kind of thing. We'll be all moved on to our next venture. But it's the decision that we make now that are going to affect the guy's grandkids if they get the house, you know, all those little families over there. So, you know, for me, that's always been a, that bridge has always been not a good thing. I don't know anyone that supports it. I don't know why we would need, maybe that's something. So when you were saying that you wanted to find out if we need to have that done now, why would we?
Well, that's what I want to know. I want to know if there's something that the MPO is requiring of us, if the counties require something. Like what?
Just so in my head, so I have context because I can't even imagine what it means.
Putting aside money for capital projects, they may require that we put a Putting aside money for capital projects, they may require that we put aside a certain amount of money for certain capital.
Sometimes the design phase, the design step is critical in a timeline. Now, I am not familiar with the, into the weeds, so to speak, to tell you that something that's programmed for 2026 requires imperatively to be designed in 2021. I cannot say that, we'll find that at the next meeting. But it wouldn't surprise me that they want the design kind of like all buttoned up before they go to the next step. Now, whether that buttoning up has to happen in 21, we have to find out.
Okay. So I mean, I guess if you really want to keep it in with the asterisk, that if it's not absolutely.
Supported.
Right. And then we could, I mean, we still have to approve the budget, we're not approving the budget today, so.
No, no, this is just a workshop, but this dialogue is important, because Commissioner James brought something to my attention that I was not aware of.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to pull it, but if.
I know that, I have questions for Fernando. Fernando, I heard earlier that we only have one exit out of that neighborhood. I've lived there all my life, we have several. Can you respond to that? How many exits do we have? We have Dania Beach Boulevard, okay. We have First Street on both corridors. We have three or four exits to Griffin Road, correct? Okay, we have an exit by Truly, correct? We have an exit by the Q smart, correct? Like that back road now, that turns, I don't even know what road that is, by the storage place behind, all of that. We have, so that argument is null and void. I know for a fact that it doesn't, that you don't have to allocate monies right now for a design phase. We don't, why, I don't know why we would allocate monies into supporting something we don't know that the community wants. If we are going to pass that, and then let's go back to the September 2019 resolution. I don't like how the resolutions are written, just because we only, you know, you really have to comb through it with a fine-tooth comb to be able to see every single thing that we're really voting on. It doesn't have any, I would like if there are any contentious or hot-topic items that they not be hidden. I'm not blaming that on any one person, that's how this has been done for a very long time. And it makes things very difficult, because when it comes back to us, they say, oh, you voted on it. Like we, like this isn't in the budget that was given to us, the bridge and all of these things. But then when you go find it and you vote on it and they say, oh, you voted on it in the budget, but we didn't have that discussion, that wasn't something that we were going to have per se for discussion. And it's something that's really, really important to that community. So I would like to pull it, because I can't fathom supporting something that is going to in turn support it to the county and support it to the MPO and all these other levels when we, when the last time we spoke to the community, they did not want it. And I do know some people that want it, but they do not live in that neighborhood. They live in the southwest section over there by those schools, the Attics and Bethune. I cannot find five people on that side of the community who's going to advocate for that. You're gonna open that up and it's gonna be a very busy highway. We have Saratoga that has a lot of families, that has a lot of kids, that has a lot of elders, that's gonna be right there coming to and from that area. And then you have another Saratoga that's being proposed right across the street. So we have a major, another bridge that is gonna be a major bridge and a major thoroughfare going right into a residential community, and that's not something I'm gonna support.
Go ahead, Commissioner. That's exactly what I was saying about, there's been a lot of changes. That's why I specifically brought up Annie's beautiful project that she's got there. I don't know how it would be impacted, but I too think that we're talking about, so you don't even know if you'll be here tomorrow or on that commission. I think it should be pulled, it's too premature.
We see the consensus, and I think we'll follow your directive. And I think it's also important for us to go back to the MPO and Commissioner Harris too, and get that clarity. We had no idea, we're bringing it very transparent here in this budget, we discussed it, Commissioner James, and I did not know of all the issues.
Yeah, I mean, I think too, what Commissioner James said about the eventuality of Saratoga 3, more families, more, hopefully more seniors, and we don't want to create a thoroughfare through a residential neighborhood. So it definitely needs a lot more investigation.
And you know what, and if developers wanted and need it, then you know what? The developer should play a role in part of that dialogue with those residents. You know, so we get the directives and, you know, that's why we're having this workshop. So we could definitely take it out, go back and have that dialogue with the MPO. And maybe we could replace that with something else that's viable, that you all recommend or that we can recommend.
Or that maybe a project that's coming up sooner, that maybe we need to put money aside for?
Perhaps, yes.
Because that's, I mean, that's, there are other projects on that list that are not just, I mean, there's things that are coming up sooner than that.
Yeah, so this is a part of the cycle one funding, basically the beginning process of the surtax money that was awarded, the first collections. And the thing that's important to remember is that, right now in COVID, sales tax statewide are being affected very heavily right now, because of restaurants being closed and automobile sales being down, and hotels. So future surtax money, that projections a couple of years ago showed that there was gonna be all this money coming in, that's all changed in a matter of just a few months. So projects that were maybe two, three years out could also be in jeopardy now due to the current economic downturn and the lack of sales tax, which is basically the surtax money, that extra 1% coming in to fund projects like this. The reason why this one's on the list is because the cycle one money is already in the bag and they're awarding the projects. So I take the manager's lead and we will, we'll talk with Colin, we'll find out from the MPO exactly what, what are all the strings attached and what needs to be done? And then we can bring something back in the next few weeks.
Or there's a project that we have that is lower ranked, then we could switch it up with this one. That's also an opportunity that we may have.
I think Bill knows a heck of a lot more, I really do.
I think he can find out a lot more for us quicker.
Yeah, let us know. Thank you, thank you for your guidance.
All right, next item?
Are we going all over the place on this?
Yeah, just if you have something you want to say, just bring it up.
Oh, good, here it comes, okay. I want to know, and I wish he'd come in this room on third ground, and why he needs an assistant at a time like this when we're not doing nothing in any of the parks? Why do we have to put this in the budget now? Why can't it wait and leave it open till, say, six months from now or something and readdress it? I don't understand that.
I will tell you, Commissioner, and that's a very good question, but one of the most active departments that we have had throughout all this COVID challenge has been Parks and Recreation. Be it food drives, be it opening parks, ensuring that, we're one of the very few cities that actually have employees supervising parks. I will go by a park in another city that will remain unnamed, where I took a photo and I have it here on my phone, of 14 kids in a basketball court. Not to mention that we run all these facilities, but also the beach. We have now beach ambassadors. Eric has cross-trained the team, but every time we close the beach and you get that text from me, well, guess what? Our beach ambassadors are noticing that not only are we at capacity, but we're in a dangerous situation. So BSO is called and code is called. So one of the largest departments that's a seven-day operation and really doesn't have an assistant. We can continue this way, but then we're going to continue to be a below-average recreation department. We do really well with senior programming and programming for the little bit, for the little kids, but we don't have co-ed leagues, we don't have adult leagues. We're not taking care of our young adults, we're not taking care of our teenagers, okay? We like to partner with BSO. We had a great meeting with Commissioner James a couple of weeks ago and with the chief of police. There's a systemic challenge that we're facing in our country. And a lot of that is the disconnection between law enforcement and the youth in our community. And I've seen it work, I've seen it work in the city of Miami Beach, I've seen it work in the city of South Miami and other cities that I've worked at. And we really believe that if we take somebody and we run them down to the ground without giving him that support, then I think it's a disservice to all the service and the product that we want to put out there in regards to parks, recreation and our beaches.
I want to ask him.
Yes, ma'am.
Really, I do. Eric, if you had this other position, all right, would you be, I agree with you, I hate this thing. Would you be promoting from within? That's what I wanted to know. Or are you gonna go out there and bring somebody in from North Miami Beach?
Well.
You know, that's a, you know, please.
That's a pot, that's a dig.
That's really not appropriate, but, I mean, anyway.
No, I'm serious, you know I am.
What I would say to that, Commissioner, first of all, good evening, everybody. What I would say to that is that this building was built by not putting the walls up first. It was a foundation that was established. And when I got here in Recreation to the city of Dania Beach, there was a lot of avenues we needed to cross. There was a lot of things that we needed to accomplish. And we're getting there, we're not there yet, but we're getting there. And if we're gonna get there, we got to start with the foundation of Recreation with the city of Dania Beach. A position at that caliber should be worldwide, to bring the best person in here. To be, if something was to happen to me, they can step right in. Not to say we don't have somebody in-house that can accomplish that, but I just feel that we need to go out and make sure that we're bringing the best candidate in, whether it's in-house or outhouse, or whether it's in-house or outside of the city of Dania Beach.
But Eric, let me tell you something, in the past and all of you, you always push for promotion from within. We've gotten so far away from that, it's unreal. Nobody's being promoted from within.
You know what, Commissioner, we just promoted Eleanor, we just, we just promoted Corinne.
About parks too. I mean, at the time, we remember, there was like a team who was so unbelievable. There's Raphael, who was so unbelievable. Why do we have to go outside for a person that's gonna learn under you? Anyway, I'm sure like that girl that was here, she was phenomenal. Gonzalez, like she said, I trained the person. I trained that person to do the job if I'm not here. Why can't your department be that way and we promote from within?
Our department is that way. We've promoted three employees within over the past year.
But this will be your assistant, a person that has been with our city forever so long. Any of them are qualified, if something happened to you tomorrow, we've got the people there that can take over. And that's how I feel on that one, really. Just like on me too, though. If I die tomorrow, we know somebody else is gonna sit in the chair. It's not specifically on you, don't take it that way, but I'm taking it on all of us, that we are all replaceable. And Gonzalez teaches that person that she's talking about. All we did was change the name from generalist, and I can't understand why you can't promote from within in a recreation department that is really, I don't care about the food drives, it ain't working in any of these halls at all, we're not even open, for crying out loud. These parks are not doing anything for any of our residents here. And I don't understand why, at this time, you can't promote from within. I guess that's what gets me, because I love our employees.
Can I say something?
Yes, of course.
I think what we've done with every position so far that has been needed is we have put out the position, people have applied from within and from outside of the city as well. And they're interviewed, and the best person is chosen for the job. It might be somebody from within, it might not be. But you, to limit yourself strictly to people within the city is not the policy that we've been following and is not necessarily the best way to go in any setting. But you have to give yourself a broader opportunity to see who's out there. But this is something, I mean, this is somebody that's gonna be working for Eric, and Eric really is the one who needs to be able to make that decision ultimately, as to who it is that he wants to put in that position.
And also, I would like to say that being here almost this month, we'll make two years, as I analyzed our employees, I put them in position where they will be successful. So I created a recreation coordinator that the city of Dania Beach did not have, and I promoted someone full-time in that position, which was a step up where that person can thrive and be successful. We did not have a superintendent, we promoted somebody within into a superintendent position where they can thrive and be successful. I'm not, I wouldn't like to promote someone to a position as a director and have them fail if they don't have the experience or the knowledge to do that. Not saying that we don't have it, but I do know that there's a broader scale outside of the city of Dania Beach that we need to tap into as well. And we don't want to put staff in positions that will ultimately cause their demise or cause them to fail. So we need to put them in positions based on their ability to succeed in recreation.
Commissioner James?
Thank you, I have a few topics, but I'll start with this one. I do know that the city of Dania Beach has, and they still do, sometimes have certain positions that say internal only. And so we don't just always go out to everyone else. I do want to ask, with the superintendent position, is the athletic director position being eliminated? Or will you still have an athletic director?
No, we don't have an athletic director, because the superintendent is the athletic director. That position is a superintendent, which was a step up from an athletic director, based on what we had here when I got here. But what we were trying, what I am doing, not trying to do, but what I will do in the city of Dania Beach, is make sure our market, our recreation department, to be successful in the long run. So that means that we need to put positions in place where, once we grow, once we stop building buildings, once we stop building facilities, we'll have those positions in place where a superintendent would be over a certain district. A manager would be over a certain district, a coordinator would run these facilities. So those positions are being put in place. And that's what I talked about when I came in and talked about building from a foundation standpoint, instead of putting up a wall first.
Okay, I do know also that, coming from someone that loves Parks and Rec, I know when I first sat on this commission, we had very little to zero investment in our Parks and Recreation. You know, we had your Chicky's Seniors Club, but other than that, if you didn't come here once a month, we really didn't have much for our seniors to do. And then, you know, gracefully aging has come. And it's been, and it's been really well. What I will say is, I can speak on understanding, I believe I understand from what Commissioner Brandon Marty is saying, not necessarily how she's saying it, but I do think the best signs of any type of leadership is to be able to be absent in your team, not fail. I do believe regardless of whatever department it is, you should be able to be out for two weeks in your department, not fail, because that's the amount of leadership that you are pouring into your staff that you already have. So I believe that is where Commissioner Brandon Marty is coming along the lines that, you know, whoever the director is, you should be able to not be afraid to miss a day at work. You should be able to not be afraid to go through a crisis, because that amount of leadership is what you're pouring into your staff. Now, what I will say is, I, we don't have, we can't really house our Parks and Recreation staff. So regardless of what we're doing, I know that, I heard what the vice mayor said, it was very hard for me to hear, honestly. But sometimes that's, it is what it is. With COVID, I don't, I don't know how viable a project like the Parks and Rec Master Plan is going to be within the next year or maybe even two years. We just don't, there's so much uncertainty. And with our economy, I can't, I can't see our residents going, say, yeah, let me raise my taxes so I can help pay for these facilities. So I don't, I don't know, I'm up in the wind with that. But I do know, as our Parks and Recreation grows, because I can tell you, it has changed leaps and bounds over the past year, so. It really has. What I will say is that we do need to think about where we are going to house our Parks and Recreation staff. I know that we, they are currently, some of them are in the Southwest Community Center. That building is highly underutilized for recreational activity. I would like to see maybe, I don't know, I know we have $250,000 for the West Wing, but I would like to maybe break that apart and change the Southwest Community Center maybe into a Parks and Rec place. Not for kids to necessarily come, they can still have that ability, but for him to have the staff as we grow as a city, because we're. Because whether we like it or not, with us, you know, approving all of these developments, we're growing as a city. And we're, we're going to have Parks and Rec, and we're going to have programs, and we need to have a centralized location. And I don't think that we have that effectively right now. So, but whatever we're doing with the positions, that's, that's, that's one thing. But I, I think that if we're really going to function at a high level, you have to have a centralized location where, where you can give the opportunity to grow as a staff, even if it's hiring another coordinator or hiring another, whatever the position is, we need to be able to have the ability to grow in an effective way.
And Commissioner James hit on a couple of key points. And yes, I should be able to go to India, and I have, you know, I've, I've been blessed. And we should be able to have somebody hold the line in my position for two, three weeks, you know, we have for however many weeks vacation. When, when Nikki left, Adam held the line, and Adam did a great job. And let me tell you, when Eric went on vacation, you know when I go on vacation, but you don't know when they go on vacation. When Eric went on vacation and, and his daughter got married, we had Anthony rise to the occasion. But that is on, on, on a temporary basis, on a temporary basis. And look, we could put it in the budget, it could, it could be a position that starts in the new year in January. And you're right, we have limitations today because of COVID.
Right.
And I think Commissioner James brings up some points. Where are we gonna house people until we do have that Parks Master Plan? And it may be further from the, the reality, but in the meantime, we need to be able to look at spaces like the Southwest Community Center, like the Northwest, like, like this space. Can we invest a little bit more in, in this space and, and, and make it better? But let's not prevent us from evolving because we don't have a room today. Because this is the budget that gives us the opportunities that we've never had. Let this be your legacy, like Commissioner James said. For the past year, year and a half, our Parks and Recreation has evolved in leaps and bounds. But it's not where we want it to be, and you should never wanna have an administration that settles, because then we're not providing what is best for this, for this community, and, and they deserve it. We deserve, you know, like you have done a fantastic job, and, and Commissioner Grace, to have great senior programming. But other than senior program, and what, the, the seven to 10-year-olds? We don't have girls softball leagues. We don't have, you know, little boys playing soccer. We don't have COVID leagues. The Vice Mayor and I, you know, we could play COVID volleyball or COVID basketball. This is what I've seen City Miami, City Miami beat, because I have worn that Parks and Rec director hat. And you know what happens to people from Parks and Rec? We take on, and we take on, and we take on, and we don't say anything, because during difficult times, the garbage got, has to be picked up, and we're not gonna cut police. But this is a time that we can finally say, we need this position, we wanna evolve, we wanna diversify our Parks Department. And not just in Recreation, but in Culture, in Education, in Social, and really, really be proud of connecting all the parks and having our kids move around from park to park. Not just a certain population at CW and a certain population over there at PJ Millie, but having a great Parks program.
I just, I, I wanna add something to, um, you may not be aware of this, Commissioner Brandon Mart, but over this entire time with COVID going on, I will tell you that the Parks Department has been extremely busy. Because it's not just the parks, it's the beach, it's the marinas.
Community center.
There's been a, a, a lot that's gone on, and Eric, I, I always feel bad when I have to send something, because I know it's seven days a week, and he's the only one there. It's not like he has anybody that is at or close to his, his level as an Assistant Director who can take over, say, on a Sunday. Um, and I know he also is a pastor in a church too, and you have things that you have to do as well, other responsibilities in the family and everything else. And it's, you know, they've been incredibly busy. There have been a lot of orders that have been issued, a lot of changes that have gone back and forth between the beaches and the parks in particular, that have impacted that department tremendously, and they have had to jump at a moment's notice. You get notified at five o'clock on a Friday that on Monday that the parks are being opened. And everything has to be done right away. So they've been doing a lot during this time period, so.
And, and, and-
I, I agree.
And, and also, my motto for the city of Daniel Beach is we don't watch it happen, we make it happen. And Commissioner James mentioned about space. If you go to the Southwest Community Center today, you'll see that we have a reception center now where we can greet folk in there that we didn't have before. We have office space where my office is, because we had to move out of the Swanson House. And we are preparing for an Assistant Director in that space. It would be great if we can transform it. If we can, we're gonna make it happen in that space. And we've already started making it happen as if that's all we can, we can be able to do is just transform it to the way we have transformed it. So it does, I don't know when the last time any of you have been in there, but if you go in there today, you will be totally surprised of how it look. We have a nice, beautiful desk out front. We have nice chairs to greet folk as they come in the building. Because we have made that our administrative office until we, we pass a bond. Until, that don't happen next year or the year after. Whenever it happens, it's gonna happen. But what we need now is we need to have a second in command to get those plans done. We just, we just was awarded money, $200,000 match to do something on our beach with a FERDA grant. So that, that person needs to be experienced in, in pulling grants, pulling, you know, these type of things, have been in the trenches. Because the things that we're gonna bring to the city of Daniel Beach, it's not something that the city of Daniel Beach have seen. So I'm not dis, uh, crediting any of my staff, because they all are terrific. But I'm not gonna put them in position to fail if they're not ready for a position as Assistant Director. But what I would tell you, we have some dynamite staff, and the mayor said they've been working since COVID. We work seven days a week. Anthony and myself, the superintendent and myself, we hit the beach every single day.
Yep.
Um, and, and guess what? If we do not get another position, it doesn't stop what the plan is for the city of Daniel Beach. But I just need you guys to know one thing. We're gonna start with the foundation. I was a basketball player. I don't look like it, and I wanted to do like, I wanted to be like Michael Jordan. But what was told to me by my coach, my coach told me, out of life, and he'd say, "Son, you need to learn the fundamentals. You need to establish a foundation." We can't look at other cities right now. What we need to look at is establishing a foundation for Recreation and moving forward. And I think we, and I think the semen is ready to be poured on that foundation for the city of Daniel Beach and Recreation.
Well, I wanna tell you something, okay? I have the largest club in this city, and yet I only have one Parks employee here. I go to other parks where there's more people for nothing. If you have a schedule, if you make a schedule for people, like CW Thomas, they got two people. I'm tremendous, I got one. And I even needed a second person here. I really did as help. How many times have I called you for the same reason, to tell you, there's nobody here? One person cannot handle this place. You need people. I don't care if we're gonna give him a title of an Assistant, but you need workers. You really need workers, I'm telling you, because I can't walk in here and just find Raphael here. And I've had a problem one time only, thank God BSO was here, when a guy threw something at me. But you need more than one employee to handle just this place for the seniors. You got two over there for less than 50 people. Why ain't I got two workers here?
You know what, Commissioner? One thing, you, you, you see Eric all dressed up today in a suit, and you'll see me in this blazer, and, and like Gustavo Fernando. We are a working team, and once we sit down with, with that Assistant Director and our Superintendent Anthony and Raphael, we can continue to better make an assessment. When you're telling us that you need more support from Parks and Rec, called you, that is basically saying, you know what? We need to add another position, because we need to look at this holistically. And that's what we will do, working with the team, if we're able to grant us that position.
I don't care about the Assistant Manager title. It goes back to what, what the other lady was saying, and you just changed the title. I need a worker, a guy who's gonna come out here and he's gonna help, and you should testify to this. You see how busy we are then. And I couldn't do it without Parks. I'm telling you the truth, I'd have to disband 258 seniors and tell them why. I can't handle it by myself. So when Parks are here, they at least, the, the, the corner over there that you see, Mark Felicity did a great job. He made sure I had two workers back there, because then even me at my age, I worked the kitchen. I don't even sit down and eat.
And you know what, Commissioner? The days that you have your, your meetings and, and your reunions, maybe we need to better make an assessment.
I put him on first, just so he could get out of here. Am I telling the lie?
No, you're not, Commissioner.
Really and truly, because I know why. I say he's busy, and he's gotta get back to the work of the city. That's why I put him on first and Danny, and if Bill is here, I know Bill's gonna have to run out, so I'll put Bill up there to 12. Or even if it was Lori, I'll say that she's our, our mayor, and she's got, she's got work to do.
And, and you know what, Commissioner? Even if we need to, you know, bring Chris to support, one of the things that we discussed, and I discussed it with Commissioner James when we had our one-on-one, what COVID has done for us, okay, and what, what, what we've known always in Parks and Recreation is to cross-train employees. You know, for me, the guys that were working on landscaping learned how to do the ball fields and the, and the football fields. So what this is doing is, you know what? An admin is no longer an admin. If we need to, you know, bring an admin to support your operations and look at things in, with, with fresh eyes, this is what COVID has done.
And also, Commissioner, I'm not sure if you, if you're aware of it, but just before COVID, we hired an employee for IT Parker, when you mentioned that to me at one of your meetings. So Raphael have a person that we did hire, and he's on board. He's one of our beach ambassadors until we open up back here. But we did hire somebody to fit that void that we had when I came here one day and I saw the void. We filled it already. It's done.
Well, it's wonderful, and that person that you hired, okay, probably it's more interesting down the beach than it is here with over 50-year-old people.
No, no, no.
Guess they leave their cell phone home and help Raphael.
He's, he's, he's amazing, and he can't wait for you guys to get back. So we already hired that person.
Then I'll send the pictures, all right? Put, uh, put that cell phone in your pocket.
Okay.
Oh, I have, I have a question, Commissioner Brandon Marty. Do you, did you have a recommendation for the position? Are you satisfied with the position?
No, you're darn right. I know, all I wanna know is who's gonna be here Anna when I open those doors, that's all. If you have to move the person because you got a problem, that's fine with me. Otherwise, the way you assign Akeem, who cannot leave CW Thomas, I want the same respect.
We did, we, and it's done. It's already done.
Okay.
We're ready to go when you open up to have-
It's already done. He's, he's been hired, he's on board, he's a terrific employee. It's already done.
So you're good?
It's done.
I'm just asking-
I'll be honest with all of you, if it's the same employee that was here the last two months of it, no?
He's new.
Oh, well, then you must realize that there was a problem. It was very bad, but I, I, I didn't say anything, only because I knew his workload was terrific, and I wasn't gonna give him another problem.
No, no, but whenever you have-
That's why I kept calling.
No, and, and, and I, everything that you discussed about your dissatisfaction, we talked about it, and we made that change. Like Eric says, that individual that's here to support you is working now as our beach ambassador seven days a week.
Because Raphael is the tops, but like I say, I want the same respect that you give at CW Thomas, because it's very obvious. First of all, Akeem was here, and he was moved, which was fine. I love him being with my sister Bobby. However, I wanna know who's gonna be here when I open that door, just like they can count on the person. Because they go and get our, our stuff that we need at the Restaurant Depot. They bring all the supplies here, which I bitched about because of the fact that if you follow through on this plastic, Eric could take you in the beautiful room that you and him had built, and you'll see nothing but plastic. I got really big problems that go over $1,000 with this. That's number one. Number two-
That's all right.
I know we are. Okay.
I know we are.
I'm used to being in the water. Number two that I wanna bring up, Mayor, is this. At the end of the, I don't care what you wanna call it, when COVID came in and we were closed down, the doors were locked on us, and they said that we couldn't come in here anymore. Uh, at the time, I had a balance in my budget of money of $7,000. Are you listening, Bill? Okay, $7,000 I had in that budget. I went to Eric about it, and I went to Anna Garcia about our city, um, manager, and I asked them, will I be losing that $7,000? You told me no. You told me that because of COVID closing us down, it would be carried over. Well, it's not. So that was nothing but a big lie there. Think about this. I could have held one grand party, maybe five, before you locked those doors and spent that $7,000, but I didn't. And I noticed in the budget, it's in there for the 30, but you kept the seven. I wanna know why you did that.
Let me, let me just clarify that. When we said it will be there until the end of the year, maybe it was a misunderstanding here, because-
Oh, God, no.
There's the calendar year and the fiscal year.
No, 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 Anna, there was no misunderstanding. You skipped the $7,000, probably gave it to somebody else.
No, we, Commissioner, it doesn't work that way.
I could have ordered all the rest of the supplies, knowing what I know now. I could have.
Commissioner-
You realize that every lunch we use, 200, close to 200, and you attend the lunches, you ought to know, of the plates. And that's what, what you do. I don't understand why you lied, but you both lied.
Let me, let me, let me try to help this out.
Let's not talk, let's not accuse people of lying first of all.
What are you doing?
Commissioner, you, you have $7,000 until the end of the calendar year.
Let me, let me try to help this situation out, okay?
Thank you.
Oh, I think I need Frank for that, though. Um, Vice Mayor, while you're doing your duties, could you, could you bring Frank back? Bring Frank back. And, and until then, I could ask, um, Eric about something that happened. And I only know about this because I played basketball for the city of Hollywood, and I know that a lot of the funds went, um, through the city of Hollywood, but we were able to have a different type of an account to where it, it, it did not go back into the general fund. It kinda rolled over, and you're able to, I know Commissioner Brandon Marty's-
It was rolled over.
I know Commissioner Brandon Marty's club runs differently from gracefully aging, because gracefully aging is a city-run program. So you, you'll see more city staff, because they actually run the program. They don't have a board. I brought the gracefully aging here with, uh, one of the staff, with Mark, um, Felicity, uh, a few, a few years ago. And it's, it's different, but I, I want to see if it's possible, and Frank may know about this, because I, I don't know the proper term to it. I just knew there was an accountant that allowed the funding to be there, and that funding will be rolled over, and it would not go back to the general fund. If so, I would like to, to have our, whatever the commission funds for those specialized boards, like, like your seniors, um, not necessarily gracefully aging, because within gracefully aging, again, is run by the staff, but any, anyone else, or like the MLK, who has an allocation from the city to, to subsidize and help it run, they have an account that you can fundraise and do all of those things, and it can go to that account. However, it will not, it will not go back to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. Um, Eric, what, do you, are you familiar with that? Because I know you were in the city of Hollywood, and, and they always said the Pau Rosa account or something was wrong with the funding, and, and it went through that.
In the city of Hollywood, excuse me a second. In the city of Hollywood, we have something called Fund 11. And a Fund 11 account allowed me to send Tamara to North Carolina year after year, when she played in my program. The Fund 11 account was an account set up where you can put sponsorship in the account and it rolled over. But general fund monies did not roll over in the Fund 11. So we called a Fund 11 accountant. We established it through the Pau and through our travel basketball and football programs, as well as our seniors. And with that account, if the city gave you $10,000, you had to use it within that fiscal year. But if you put $10,000 in there, it rolled over, not the general fund's money. And I don't, and Frank can probably attest to this. And so we had an account called the Fund- And I don't, and Frank can probably attest to this. And so we had an account called the Fund 11. And we can come up with some particular name, but anything that's general funded, it did not roll over. You had to spend it within that fiscal year.
Right. Right. My thing is, I don't want it really in my heart to roll over. What I really want to know is if I go over, will you cover it? Eric, did you understand what I meant? Because of COVID, if I gotta do more and because, especially after that write-up in Kahoots, I've got people calling, added an unbelievable amount of people that want to join because of that Kahoots magazine. What I'm saying is this, don't give me that $7,000. All I want to know is that if I go over due to the circumstances that I was forced to close, will you cover it up to that amount? That's all I want to know. Okay.
Can, can, I think our finance director can maybe answer the question for you, but me.
Just, yeah, just to, to clarify and to also, I, I want to commend Eric because he's 100% correct. Um, anything in the general fund does not roll over from year to year. The only way that that $7,000 that was remaining could be utilized after this fiscal year is if the, if it was, number one, if the budget for the senior program is increased by $7,000 next year. So it was appropriated in the budget, or if the city commission decided to add funding to it next year at some point during the year. So there, there is, none, none of the money that's in the general fund budget rolls over automatically unless it's been encumbered through a purchase order for a particular project or a purpose.
I knew it. That's why I asked about it.
And, and as far as the, the special fund, I've seen that done in other cities where I've worked and I actually had the conversation with Commissioner James a few months ago. We talked about this. That if there, just like Eric said, sponsorships or donations from the public can be put into a special account that could be carried over from year to year. It can be augmented or supplemented by general fund appropriations, but always that general fund money has to be spent from year to year. The leftover donations or sponsorships from the community can be set aside and carried over from year to year to do different and special things. So if there's a program that you want to set up where you can actually accept sponsorships from the community, we could set those monies aside and they could be used over year to year.
Vice Mayor? This may be a little bit of a separate part of the conversation, but it just, it triggered my, my memory from last year when we were talking about the charities. Did we decide that we wanted to handle charities in any different ways this year? We haven't gotten, well, that's why I was getting into it. Or did you guys want to keep talking?
Well, can we handle this and then get into that because I had that down as well?
So to, to finalize that conversation, my apologies with me and, and with Eric. If, if you understood that we meant the rest of the year, when we said the rest of the year, we should have been more clear and not let you think that it was like January or next year, that it's the rest of the fiscal year. For example, a lot of us are not going to use what was allocated for travel, right? Let's say we had $5,000 for travel. That doesn't mean I'm gonna have now $10,000 for travel. So my apologies if we didn't make that clear. But like Commissioner James said, there could be funds that could be established for whatever you want to do, that those funds could go. But general fund cannot go from year to year. And, and I think that Vice Mayor had brought a really good discussion that I think that maybe we want to transition to.
Well, I have, okay, because I don't want to, I don't want to leave something. She still looked upset about it, so.
Oh, no, yeah.
No, no, no. So I, I have, I have a question. Frank, how, how much is in the budget for, still left in the budget for both programs, for gracefully aging and the seniors?
Are you talking about for the current fiscal year?
For the current fiscal year.
I don't have that number.
Okay. I would like to see what that number is and possibly because of COVID, make an exception to tag that amount on to the next fiscal year for both of those programs because a lot may change. They may have to change the way we do things, um, the supplies that they have. I know that the whole issue with the styrofoam and all of that other stuff may be a factor. I would like to tie in whatever they have left this fiscal year for a one-year only to tag it on so that they may be able to use it if they need it and do not have to come back and address it when she's not on the commission. Is that, would, would that be okay with you Commissioner Brandon Martin? I can see if we can get consensus.
I want to explain something to you. Again, I want yous to know, I have faith in the fact that I think that Eric can cover if I did go over a little bit. I think it's been done in the past and I think he could do it without you having to change it to say you want to give $37,000 to me. I don't need it. But if I do need it because I went over due to COVID, I go to him, right?
And, and also, you, earlier you spoke about things that you would have bought. You still have maybe close to two months to still go and buy those things. The fiscal year is not up yet. So you can still go out.
I know, but I had to use your parks and I didn't want to lay that on you. I have to use your parks because your guys go and pick it all up.
We, we're working every day. So we, you can still purchase those, those items before the year is out.
I have to go and inventory to find out what plastic you guys want me to get rid of because of what came up. And I won't be on this board that way, Mayor, I won't. So I gotta know what plastic in there I gotta throw out. I don't even know because we didn't say anything.
I, I think Eric is willing to assist you.
I think Commissioner, if you, because of this ordinance, it's really very good for our environment, you need to spend X amount of dollars that you didn't expect. Certainly, we can make that adjustment and have that discussion.
We'll make it.
Right. That's what I mean. I'm, I'm asking him if he will cover me. And he said yes. So I don't know, but you, you don't have to change it, right?
No, no. What, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if you wanted to make changes, let, let me finish. What, what I'm saying, if you wanted to make changes, and I apologize if I feel like I'm coming off, um, brunt, but if you wanted to make changes on, from plastic to, you know, getting rid of plastic, you can do, you can still do that now. We in Parks and Rec have been working seven days a week. We have not stopped working. We're here. We can open up. We can allow you to get whatever you need. We will take the invoices. We will process them. You can still have time to get that done with the monies that you still have in your budget. It's not done yet. And I'll help you with that. That's what I mean. I'll help you establish what you need to establish and change your, your, your cubbies out.
Well, they gave it six months. They gave it six months. We were, I, I don't think you were in on that.
But that's a good point that Eric is saying. We can spend that money, invest that money.
You have time. You still have time.
Yes.
And Rafael, I can get with him and Anthony and myself and we can help you change out your, your cabinets to get the plastic out if that's your desire.
But I don't still know, you've even admitted it, what should you get rid of? What can we use?
That's a different conversation. That's a different conversation for a different time. We need to talk about the budget now. But we can, but we're talking about the money issue now. He's saying you can use that money to do that. So.
I'll volunteer and help you do all of that, okay? I promise you, I will. I'll help you volunteer. I, I'll look at the labels and look them up on Google, whatever needs to happen. I, I, I'll, I'll help.
But just give me a list of, of what.
That'll be done, but that's for a separate time. We're not here to discuss that today.
That's too big. That's one of my priorities here, honey.
What other priorities?
Commissioner, we got those $7,000 for whatever the, the balance is that we can identify. We can inventory all your pubs, everything that you have to change out and, and we can make the purchase or even encumber the fund, accounting terms, right? Encumber the funds this year and get it for you next year.
Okay.
Okay. Next item. Charity? You want to talk about the charities?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Good job.
No, no.
She's not letting go.
Um, so Commissioner David, did you say you wanted to tail in on this one? All right. So I was just gonna open it up with, I know that we, um, we, this was a big sticking point last year and we wanted to try and avoid for this upcoming year, something that we had had happen many times where somebody comes up to the dais, uh, tells us their very, their very, uh, worthy story of why they need the money and, you know, we just go ahead and it doesn't seem so bad because there's only 2,000 here, 2,000 there. And I think we all agreed, I don't think there was much pushback on this, that probably wasn't the best way to do it. And, and Commissioner James, I'll let you jump in because I think you'll probably remember better than I do. I, I think we said we wanted to agree on a number and whatever the number was, we came up that we agreed with, that's it. So if it was 10,000, 50,000, whatever it, it was, uh, that's it. And that's how much we allocate, uh, for the year. We, we get the binder full, or we can get the binder full of the, the, the applications of, of, uh, you know, who, who is requesting money and we decide how to proceed forth that way. So I'll hand it off to you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. Um, I was very heartbroken, uh, last budget year, whenever the budget year was when we took the funding away. Because in these times, you know, with Brother Mac, we can really see the benefit in what a lot of community organizations are doing with little to no funding. They're feeding people twice a week. And I'm not sure where they're getting all their funding from. And, and, and I know sometimes he said he has to even go out of his pocket, but my issue was some of the organizations that we were funding are nowhere to be seen when we're going through hardships in the city.
Yep.
But I do know that we have a number of organizations that are local and that have been doing work in our city, day in and day out, without a pulse recognition or whatever. And, and I think that we do need to supplement or show good faith on our behalf that we do care about our charities and, and that is our part. Now, I don't agree with the process and how it's been done. I don't know the best way to do it. I do think we need to decide on an amount. I would like for staff or someone to look at other cities and what they do and how they allocate it. I, 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 I really want it to get away from the hands of any of us and maybe have, um, some type of, um, uh, what do you call those things? An advisory board or so, some type of board set up to handle those things so it won't be so political. Not saying that we're coming in here for political reasons, but for every one thing that we're funding over, something else, that's something that, that they're tying or people will tie to your name, my name and everyone else's name. I want to know the best way to do it. And if that's the best way, I'm willing to do that. But I, I just want to make sure that we are doing it in the best possible way to where, you know, just because the change is over, and, and I would like these people to keep these positions for more than two years in an election cycle. So just because a new person comes on this commission, we have some type of continuity or some, some type of consistency on a board. And, and I, and I think we need to pay attention of who we're putting on the board. Not just our friends or somebody we just want to put on the board because they're gonna vote for this charity or that charity or whatever, but I, but I really think that we need to look back and see what we're doing because we, we really have to supplement, especially in these times, we have to supplement the people who are working tirelessly without, you know, a thank you, um, to be able to help them from us.
I, I agree. If I can just respond really quickly. If you can, I had something to add to that, but go ahead. Okay, I'm just gonna respond really quickly. Um, so I, I would think the first part of the process would be finding out what is the best practice, if it is the board, you know, I, I, I don't know what it is. Um, and then I guess, would we have to come up with a number today? Would that be something we would do?
Well, I, I think you're both going in the same direction. And I had an earlier conversation, um, with, with, with the mayor. I think the old way of, of the way we were doing it, it was not the right way. I think we need to, after we finish these workshops and we look at, you know, the, the, the entire budget, you guys can give us some guidance in regards to a number. What I've seen in other cities, you know, to deep politicize this, it's, it's a grant advisory board, right? And then you have a deadline for submission and then you have X amount of money. And then that board gets the presentations. So for example, Brother Mac will move forward and say, you know, I put in an application for $5,000. But they could say, well, you know, Brother Mac, this year we're gonna allocate you 3,000. But that testimony in regards to what Brother Mac has been doing in the community is what I would advise would be the decision-making process. Because we were funding folks with taxpayer dollars. We didn't know where they were.
Yeah, and we, we seem to all agree that that's not the way to go. So you, your recommendation would be a grant advisory board?
A grant advisory board and a number that is set and we begin the, the process every year.
Yeah.
You know, it could be, you know, during the budget process or you can adopt the money and let's say come December or come January to make the presentations. You can do that anytime you want.
But they would do the presentations to the grant advisory board?
That is correct.
Okay. That sounds fantastic. But I, I, I would like to find out more about how that's done in other cities though because I am afraid that it is gonna become political because of the appointees by people that are on the commission, that it becomes political. So.
And we got our, our direction on that.
And there are a number of cities that don't even do, do charitable donations. So there's a number of cities that don't even do charitable donations.
That, that's correct. That's correct.
I mean, I think we need to kind of look at what the, 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 who does what and how it's done in the individual cities and then make a determination on that. Um, and I don't think it should be a huge amount of money. But another thought, something that I just did discuss with the city manager was, instead of doing a, a number of different charities that, which has been done in the past, is perhaps pick one or two that get a larger donation from the city so that we're focusing on those one or two each year and it's not the same ones every year. And then this way you're able to do a little bit more as opposed to if somebody is, as opposed to giving somebody a thousand dollars, maybe they need $5,000. And maybe that's something that we can give to a particular organization because that's who, that's the one that we've adopted for the year, or, or two that we've adopted for the year. Um, but that might be another way of doing it as well. But I think we need to look into it more and get a better sense of it. Commissioner James?
How do you know that the two that you are putting?
They'd have to do presentations. They'd have to do presentations and.
And they gotta show us what, why they are.
Why they're worthy of it and what their, what their position is with us. And there might be something that they do to partner with the city. They might be able to do something to partner with the city for a period of time to do certain things. And that would be the reason why.
I just need the idea of us deciding.
It wouldn't be us. It'd be to the grants.
Oh, to the grants, to a grant committee?
Commissioner James?
Yes, I, I look at the amount of the money that we give the library, for example. It's a, it's not, it's not that much, okay? $5,000. Um, and the amount of things that they're able to accomplish with that. And then I know a lot of organizations don't have the overhead and the different positions to be able to, um, I, I, I know that even $2,000 will help them tremendously is what I'm saying. Um, I, I think that if it's a, if it's an organization that's very deserving of it, like let's take the Brother Mac because he came before us all before. I, I wouldn't want to just fund them one year and then forget about you the next couple of years or however many years that it's gonna take if you can't apply for it again because there's someone that is deserving to have city support and city buy-in every single year. I mean, so I, I do, I, I do think we need to, number one, maybe just decide on an amount for now if that's what we want to do. Um, come back at a later date in a different workshop and try to come back with some ideas and workshop that or how they would be, or even how the board would be set up and the terms of that board and everything else. I don't, I don't really care. Um, I'm not really opposed one way or the next of how the committee is set up and I'm open to all of those ideas because I, I do, I don't want to be, I don't want it to be political. I want it to do what is done. I know in other cities, they fund it through their CBDG funds. And it's not necessarily that they don't do it. We just don't see it happening at the city level because it's funded not through the general fund but through the CBDG, um, fund. So I think that if we at least come up with an amount, uh, as a placeholder for what we would want to do, we can probably come up with the logistics later.
Frank?
Um, I just want to, from the, from the purely financial oversight perspective, I want to caution all of you, including Andrew Garcia, that what we're looking at doing here is developing a policy to give money to select chosen community organizations. This is the same thing as how we conduct our procurement in the city. We put out bids. We select who we think is the most worthy company and we end up paying them for services rendered. It's a fair process. It's governed in some cases by Florida statute and by city policy. But it's still open to a heavy amount of scrutiny by our auditors and the inspector general of Broward County and possibly the state of Florida. The same consequences that we have in how we conduct ourselves through procurement can also affect us when we're looking to give out money to the community. Because number one, it's taxpayer money. People are paying to the city in good faith, expecting to get services in return. They don't know that this money could be going to some local organization that they don't care about or don't want to care about. They want to know that it's being used in the course of the city's business as a municipal entity. So I just want to make sure that if you do proceed down this path of actually establishing a policy, looking at other cities, coming up with best practices, that we make sure that it is not open to scrutiny and that it's done in a way that is fair, that is reflective of the city's mission and how it operates and that doesn't, in, in one way or another, favor or some organizations over and over. some organizations over another because that will open you up to scrutiny. And it'll come back to this meeting right here because this meeting is recorded and we're all aware and we're all listening. So I just wanted you to be careful as you move forward.
Very good point, thank you. Frank, do you feel that the direction we're talking about moving in of removing it from ourself, which is before how it went, you came before us and if three of us said yay, you were good to go. So does that seem like we're moving in a better direction talking about forming an independent grant committee?
I don't know the answer to that because we need to look at what other cities do and we need to look at legally what the issues and consequences are in formally establishing a program. Right now, it's just sort of done on an ask and receive basis. There's really no criteria. So once we actually establish a protocol and a procedure, we got to make sure that procedure is bulletproof.
Okay.
And that we follow it 100%. So I would also lean on city attorney's office very heavily on this to make sure that we don't open up any trap doors that we can get caught in.
I've seen cities get in trouble, for example, that have given money to organizations that said they were non-for-profit or an organization that had a legitimate board. And I don't ever want to make those recommendations. Look, I've worked with cities that, for example, they fund two or three a year and they're like JDRF, juvenile diabetes, or the Relay for Life because it's been a whole team effort, or breast counter awareness where we go out into the community. But I think the legitimacy of these groups that we support is something that we don't want it to come back and haunt us because it spills out into this administration and to all of you. The mayor?
I just want to remind you, maybe none of you are here, but under the former administration, you did have a bid, I mean, a committee that did this, independent, the commission appointed, one person each. Alan Donnelly's here, he would be able to remind you better because he administered it. But that was done, they would come back and give a report to the commission and then what would happen over the year, because people would pull at your heartstrings, I need 2,000 for this, I need four for the library. And you go, well, it's only four, it's only two, and the whole thing eroded. It's happened, actually, the long time I've been here, we've gone through this twice. So it could be done, but it has to be done differently, better, but it didn't work before because, again, people get to you. When the library comes in and is sad about things, you want to help them. That's the hard part. And they weren't on the group or whatever happened. It has to have some ability to adapt to the situation.
And criteria that is very final.
Right. Commissioner James?
Yes, I think that, I like what Frank said. I like what the city attorney is saying. And I was going to ask in the past, what has happened now we faced any legal troubles in doing it the way that we did it? But what I will say is, oh, I just lost my train of thought.
We never had legal scrutiny over it. Frank's points are well taken because we do have an active inspector general which we didn't have years ago. But again, I don't recall ever giving money to somebody's group that was found to be less than deserving.
My thought.
They were always deserving things, you know?
Yeah, my thought is this, we're currently doing it with two organizations. So regardless if we're doing it with 50 organizations or two organizations, we're still doing it with two organizations. We're giving to the Chris Hisson Fund and we're giving to the library just by a vote. So we're already doing, you know, so either we're going to give or we're not going to give, but I don't want to select one or two organizations that we chose to give to last year. And I wish we had this conversation like this last year because I would have loved to hear that and say, guess what? As of right now, we're still, and the budget is $7,500. So regardless if it's 50 organizations or one organization, we're still giving taxpayer money to nonprofit organizations, which I don't even see a problem with because we're providing a service. Regardless if we're providing it or we're trusting that an organization is providing that service, like Women in Distress, when we gave money to them, how many times do, you know, you have women that can call 211 or call Women in Distress and that's a service for our residents? The library is a service to our residents. So not every nonprofit, I mean, even my foundation, it's a service to our residents. We, our Thanksgiving drive alone, I mean, it's a full event. So all of these things are services to our residents through the nonprofits that we have in the community. Do we want to just say only Dania Beach organizations can apply for? But I do know with partnerships with other organizations like Women in Distress and those other ones I don't have in front of me, they provide a certain level of service once they have some buy-in from the city. So we also have to keep that in mind. But if we're doing it for one, we need to do it in a way that we are covered in everything that Frank has said and everything that Tom has said. But we're already doing it now. So to just say we're only going to do it for two that we're currently doing it for, I don't think it's fair.
I think that based on what you're saying and what we've heard, I think we need to do the research and bring you forward the best criteria aligned with the best standard that other cities are doing, working with legal and working with finance. And then we could say this is the best game plan to follow and then you all insert the amount of money. Because we may say we want to augment, for example, our existing after-school program. So we look at all the providers that are out there for after-school programs, like for example, Brother Mac. But do we want to give 10 grants to the people that do the same thing and duplicate that? So a lot of it needs to come to who do we partner with? One of the things that I loved about what the CRA was doing is those matching grants because then we're able to see. But I think we should align ourselves with best practices, be able to see the books, and in that application, make sure that we check off everything that we want from that organization that aligns us with best practices.
Excuse me?
Yes?
You mentioned Brother Mac. He's been mentioned here so many times. Boy, if you ever knew of a person more deserving than him, I want to see it. He's got those little children in that room all the time, all the time, working with them every day. It's unbelievable. The man is unbelievable. I don't think we ever gave him nothing. And that is Hollywood, isn't it? Or is Brother Mac in Dania?
No, he's here.
That's Dania?
Yeah, yeah, he's here.
I didn't even realize that. I thought I was right on the border there. But the man is unbelievable. He's proven himself. Now, I'll tell you something, I had a conversation with a woman that's on the board even at the library, and I said, you know, did you ever think about having a bake sale? I'd love to buy home baked goods and raise money that way. There are organizations that don't even want to do anything to help themselves.
Exactly.
And that bothers me because they could have had a bake sale even during this time. Nothing was done.
And there are others that work hard.
I said you could use City Hall.
Yep.
And have monitored people come in and I'd buy out every cupcake you owned in there. And I said it specifically to one of the ladies. And they said, well, I don't know, we never discussed doing stuff like that. Why not? If I was in charge at the library, that's the first thing I'd say, hey, we got a problem. Let's do something. Let's have a bake sale.
You can have a matching grant or you can match 70/30?
Absolutely, but the people that we've been giving to, you're right when you say you better take a good look at it. You know where all our money's going because we don't get our money. Our money is stayed with city, which I love.
And you see the procurement? You see the procurement?
And you see everything and you know where every nickel and dime and penny is going. And we support our residents by letting them bring stuff they make and bring in here during the holiday, like out at the estate. I say I allow them to come in during my meeting and even buy baskets where they're significant all the people in their lives that they wanted to. I'll bring in a jewelry maker if I know she works in this city and before the meeting she can sell. We don't get nothing. We don't get nothing, but we're helping. But I don't see these organizations having somebody that's got to get up and go. It's either got up and went. That's it because they're not even helping themselves.
I know Frank wants to say something and we need to move along because we've been here almost three hours and I'm sure there's still more things that need to be done.
Go right ahead. And all the points you brought up on this last item was right on target.
Thank you. So the last thing I just want to say about this item is if you want to look at the types of donations or the types of support to the community focused on things that are, that the funds are being utilized in things that the city would be normally expected to do for the community. If you look at other cities, if these are the types of things that municipalities are typically providing to the community, we're just passing it through a nonprofit to do the same thing, that makes it a lot more palatable to people looking at it from the outside.
That's what I would always recommend, be it JCC. We supported the JCC when I was back in Miami Beach, Boys and Girls Clubs. But to augment existing services so we can better provide more for our residents.
Right. Okay, next item.
West Wing. Let's discuss our thoughts on that and what we want to do. I know that we were just talking about parks and recreation because I don't, we don't really know, well, we haven't had a workshop of what we all wanted to see out of that. Maybe we could take some of that money and give it to Parks and Recreation so they can fix up their facility, at least when we're talking about foundational things. We just approved an assistant director for Parks and Recreation. We have a, not an athletic director, a superintendent. He's hired some extra staff but really have a centralized location. I would rather at this point give that, give some of that funding there and us to come up with what we want to see in that space. I know we were talking about a PAL for kids and all of that. I quite frankly don't want all of those kids running in and out of City Hall. Not knowing, that's a lot of responsibility. That's a lot of more liability. I don't know what we want, but I think that is a topic of discussion of what we want to see, what funding we want to put there and the direction we want to take.
I have a question for the city manager. What is the status of the West Wing right now?
The West Wing is now clean and clear. It's totally clean, totally clear. It's not ADA compliant, you know, of course, state rep, you know, Geller, Schleppen selfs up there, but it's not ADA compliant. I think we should work towards ADA compliance first and foremost. There's existing restrooms, you know, there's plumbing available there. But I need to know what your vision for that is going to be. We could certainly put a placeholder and then at some time, a couple of months from now, you know, I would love for you to walk it. It's 2,500 square feet of space that we can use.
That we need.
But we could certainly augment the Southwest Community Center for one of our existing parks to be able to expand some office or reconfigure.
Could we use some of the funding then for a first step to make it ADA compliant? Because regardless of whatever we're putting there.
I think you have to do that.
It needs to be ADA compliant. The plumbing needs to be where it needs to be. So instead of like maybe even deciding on what it is, can we work towards that? I don't know how much that would cost, but to at least, I don't know. I know we were talking about maybe extending where the elevator goes or not doing that or how we're going to do it. I know that those stairs, I'm not sure if they're ADA compliant because they don't have a landing every few steps or whatever it's supposed to be called. But that would be my choice is to work towards making it ADA compliant and doing the plumbing in the restrooms and the facilities and the funding that's left out of that to give it to the Parks and Rec.
I would refer to at least take the steps to make it ADA. You know, right now we have offices there and that can come back to haunt us. ADA and really the restroom, there's no restroom, there's no. So other than that, that's the only thing.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. And I agree, I think that's a great idea. But still, I do want us to have offices up there. There's very small, very reasonably small, almost like, you know, cubbyhole offices. But at the end of the day, especially when we all talk about getting interns and things like that, there's been more than one time when Commissioner Harris or Commissioner Brandon Marty were in a meeting and, you know, for me to go to the back office and not interrupt them, number one, that would be weird. Number two, you know, they just may not appreciate that if I do that. So I can't go to the back of the office. So usually at the, you know, sort of mill around and there's lots of little spots to go to, but that's not really professional. I think at the end of the day, we're professionals and we should have a working space that's locked off where we can close off and have, you know, we all share these little mailboxes that are next to each other. Not that I think any of you are, you know, anything unscrupulous, but, you know, you should have a place where your locked things, your locked papers, your locked binders with information should go, just like any other, you know, working professional. So while I think maybe fine, that's good to make the first step ADA compliance, I do think individual commissioners need a small, reasonable place to do their work for whatever time they spend at City Hall.
And I would recommend, in my former city, there were seven elected officials and everyone had their office and it was very, very professional. You can have that relationship with the community. And I will tell you, and it was in the fourth floor where the attorneys and the manager's office was, it was like the executive wing. And I recommend that. And with 2,500 square feet, you can accomplish that and even have like a small little conference and then some. And if that is your wish, we could certainly make sure we have.
Does anyone else want that or do you not?
No, I was going to say, yes, we can move forward with the ADA compliance and get some plans, drawing sketches of what it would look like. I think we also mentioned the BSO PALS program, have a teaching room there for implementation of some of the after-school programs, which would be great or kind of like a multipurpose.
The more, the more.
A multipurpose room.
But the more I think about that, Commissioner, you know, the more I believe that we should really separate the kids. And I will tell you why. I can come up with an idea, but whether it's a subordinate or whether it's one of my boss, if they have a better idea, that's what I'm going to recommend. Look, right now we're in discussion, and we just met last week, with the individual who's under contract for the space behind our parking garage. And one of the things that we said is expand our green space, take that parking lot that's there, out of there because 70% of our garage is empty. Give us, you know, 1,000, 2,000, 4,000 square feet of community space where we can run a program, where we can run a PAL program. But the more I think about it, the West Wing should be for offices, executive office, legislative offices, but not for kids.
I'll make a motion or consensus to move forward. Commissioner James?
Thanks. I just want to mention, growing up, where the building department is or where the permit department is, whatever is the correct one, community development, it was the library because I frequented that library. And I didn't even, I didn't know about government then. I was in elementary school or something like that, walking from Dania Elementary Home and running through the facilities, like thinking, oh, I have AC, it's hot outside and just going crazy. Not, but me not understanding at that level and that age, I'm thinking about now what I was doing. And I'm also thinking about now the struggles that we have and the difficulty, difficulties that we have or can have with our children outside. Like with the fights and all this, like we're inviting a lot of our children in a space where it's supposed to be for administrative and uses for paying our bills and pulling permits and things of that nature. So I love kids, I love Parks and Recreation. I'm the one that's trying to champion this PAL program. But I do want to caution us to understanding what will happen when you continue to add kids into this. You don't, they're not screened, you don't know who they are, you don't, you know, and I just, I just don't want to make that mix. So I am going to support what, you know, the Vice Mayor is saying to really, for us to have office spaces. I know that we're going to have an assistant coming down the line. They can definitely be housed there. We can have a, you know, a room there. And maybe we can repurpose or make it for a dual purpose downstairs, that room that we have attached to the chamber. I don't, I don't know what it could be done, but I think that that can be something that could be repurposed for a different, for a few more office spaces down there if the spacing calls for it.
I think that's a great idea. And when we begin to have this dialogue with hopefully this group that builds, you know, their project behind the garage. And especially if they give us a PAL room, because we have had some challenges with the kids from the library. And I think having a PAL, you know, visible there, I think it will help us with the challenges with the library. Remember, some of the homeless people, remember when we were leaving the other night? People hanging out? But it would activate that space. And if we expand on the green space on somebody else's dime, right? We also have the eastern part of the garage. So if we have a continuous green space, that eastern side over the garage is our property and we can build a little community room there in the future. But I definitely think that.
That's the best one.
That second floor, we should make it ADA and it should be, you know, for mayor and commission. Yes, Frank?
We have $30,000 in the current year's city budget to do something with the West Wing. It was put in last year because originally it was $100,000, it was reduced to 30. That's sitting in the Capital Projects Fund. We can take that money and start with the ADA, because.
Start now.
At least, at least. If anything else, get an assessment done so we know exactly what it's gonna take to make it ADA compliant. And at least take that step forward while we work on planning for the rest of the, of the improvements.
That's, that's correct.
That sounds like a plan, start with that, sorry.
So we'll leave the whole 250 there to be able to do what the consensus was? I'm fine with that.
Okay. Bathrooms, ADA, offices, okay, thank you.
Anybody? Does anybody have anything else they want to bring up now?
Guess I'll bring something else up. Give me one second.
Don't know yet. We don't, we, we don't know yet.
Yeah, I know.
I have something I want to bring up. I saw in the budget, it says citywide Christmas decor. And I saw that it was for, under parks, they have around 25,000 or something roughly like that. And under the city, it has like 50 something thousand? Am I correct, Frank? Or something roughly like that. I want to know, because I, I know that we, we went through this with the CRA and when we put the RFP out or when we, we received the estimates, it was somewhere along 50 something thousand, but that was just for a certain area. I want to know what that money encompasses. So if you're saying citywide, is that, what, what part of the city is that? I, I saw the CRA's budget, they, they don't have it in their budget, but I think that it's the same vendor or whatever and it doesn't, that part doesn't matter. I want to make sure, I want to see what the, what the funding encompasses. Because what it looks like to me is that it's not going to encompass what we've already been doing and it says citywide, so.
Our goal first, and thank you for bringing it up to my attention, it shouldn't read Christmas decor, it should really read holiday decor. You know, last year we moved forward, we, we lit our first menorah. But other than at, at City Hall, we really don't see the holiday lights or, or the holiday banners. Some of the banners that Fernando and I found from like, were the turn of the century. And what we want to do is make an impact in the major thoroughfares or see how much we could stretch it, if not all our city parks. And, and really light up the city, I think after everything that we've been through this year, it could be a good, good opportunity for us.
So I, I want to see again, it says citywide and it might say holiday lighting, I probably just threw Christmas in there, I don't know. But I, I want to know what, what it encompasses. I remember we had a, a huge discussion, huge dialogue, huge arguments and everything else involving this. And, and you know, we wanted to stretch it as far as we could, but financially that didn't make sense. Or, you know, we wanted to go past Griffin with the, the newer lights instead of recycling the old ugly lights, I guess for lack of a better term. But is it going to encompass 40th? Is it going to encompass all the way down to 441? Is it going to encompass Sterling and Griffin?
It's a limited amount and it's seed money, but what do you want to do?
I, I just noticed.
Because we haven't touched that 500,000 that's there. What do you want to see?
Let me, can I throw the thought, the idea here? Because one of the things that I think we did talk about last time and something that maybe we should consider, if we want to add a little more to this, then perhaps we need to look into a company that, that we could use not just for holiday lighting, but for, for other events. Other, Fourth of July, for Memorial Day, or whatever. And then, and it goes all over the, just main thoroughfares. It doesn't have to be every little, every street, but main thoroughfares that people that come into the city see. And then maybe do some sort of an RFP or something for that, to find somebody that does it where they actually do everything for us and we don't have to worry about taking it up and putting it down. They're on a schedule, they come and do it and it's done.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I just want to, you know, when I see citywide and I know that what, what we spoke about with the same amounts of money, it didn't stretch very far. I want to know financially what that was going to encompass if we're, if we're voting it into the budget. I do agree, we need to do more than just Christmas holidays, those types of holidays. I do agree, it needs to be year round. We need to really push our brand out there and make a statement of who we are as a city. But I know it's going to be way more than what's budgeted currently right there. That's not gonna get us much.
And that's just seed money. For example, I recommend that in the future, we do at least three, three themes. Like for example, May, June, July, you have Memorial, you have Flag Day and you have Fourth of July. So we know that the summer can be all Americana. I really believe that if we can start with, with a holiday, you know, that really starts November, December and in January, this could be something that we could do. This, you're right, this is very little. We were gonna do a couple of things here and there in, in our parks, right?
So that, is that the 25,000 that are in parks? What is that for, for holiday lighting that's in the parks budget?
That is to begin to do some holiday accessorizing in our different city, uh, city parks.
The button, there's a button. Um, do we, do we have the option to, can we add some more to that? Because I mean, you know, the, the waters and the sewers and the flooding, those are all the most important things, right? But man, and especially after this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Do, I mean, like this stuff, that is so important to residents. They love seeing lights and some, and sweet things because this year has been so not sweet. So what an amazing gift we could give to the residents. But, and, and so I, I, I think what Commissioner James is pulling from, and I'm sure you'll remember, you know, the fight to get it out to the west side as well. They, they had the dinky little drummer guys that were no good for a while and then eventually they ended up having nothing. So they had nothing for a lot of years too. Right, okay, so they went from having nothing to have something dinky, now they have nothing again.
I, I would recommend that.
So what, so I think we're all pretty much in agreement about this. So how much do we want to say, 100,000?
Well, let, uh.
Where we, we started at 25? Well, I thought we, I thought we already had 25.
We have a lot of money already in the budget, it's like 50 something thousand plus another 25,000. I, I want to, I, I, I know that our CRA, and I know she's here, that did some of this last year. And not to, I'm not trying to give this to the CRA, but I want to ask, what did it encompass last year? And so we'll have a more of a roundabout number of, also we'll make an educated guess. If we want to spend 100,000, okay, let's spend 100,000. If you want to spend more or less, but for someone that was dealing with this and, and went through the bid process, is it?
I don't know how.
We call.
I guess she's right at the door if she wants to come on in. I, I remember it was a very expensive number.
What's the total that we have, Frank, between the CRA and the city?
Yeah, I think that's your chair.
Raquel, did you hear the conversation, what we were talking about?
They're, they're all listening on the link.
Oh, I didn't know she was there, clearly, listening.
I want to know what, last year, what did the budget cover and how much it was and how much would it encompass?
Okay, so last year, the CRA worked on a request for proposal for holiday lighting that would have covered Federal Highway from Old Griffin down to Sheridan. And then we were also talking about Dania Beach Boulevard as well as the city center. When it came time for budget, we actually reduced our recommendation to do that much holiday lighting and we said we would just do the city center to include a new tree, because I know the tree had been a little problematic before. So our budget proposal was about 50,000, but then through all the budget discussions, it went down to, I want to say, 7,500 and did not include a new tree. So we did all the palm trees. We had a menorah, a kanara and a wreath and that's what the 7,500 covered.
It wasn't anything new on any of our thoroughfares?
No, no, there was no. And there was no RFP done for it, right?
Uh, we, we put out a RFP last year for that. Um, this year we did not include it in the budget because the, the vendor that won the RFP and did the lights last year, they actually called us and said that they were now working with the city to, you know, go around and look at where the lights should be. So that's how we realized that the city was trying to do holiday lights. So I didn't put it in our budget for that reason. But I, I don't know what the cost would be this year to do the expanded lighting. I don't know if their quotes, these numbers would have changed from last year to this year.
Did it go down towards the beach? Or did, so with, I, I want to see when you're saying Old Griffin or whatever, whatever.
It was just a CRA. It was just a CRA.
It was, it was, the quotes that we got, it included our major thoroughfares because we just wanted to get an idea of pricing. So if we look at their proposal, it can give you a rough estimate of what it will cost on those thoroughfares that are, you know, outside of the CRA. But we did not put that in front of the CRA board because we were not recommending to spend as much on holiday lighting last year. We put before you about 49 or 50,000 and it ended up being 7,500 just for city center.
So Raquel, 50,000 was what they said to, to light up the, the, the whole city or a certain area?
No, for, for the, for the City Hall area, so all of the exterior trees, that included a new Christmas tree. And I don't know what the direction is for the Christmas tree this year, but that 49 or 50,000 would have included a new Christmas tree as well as a menorah and a kanara. I know you did an additional menorah, like a bigger one to have that lighting. But last year was the first year that there was a kanara and a menorah as part of the city center lighting package.
So what I recommend, she has done some of the legwork and Raquel already knows that what she was going to do was going to cost 50,000. I think that if we add another 50,000 and we have 100,000 for the entire city, we can really impact the city.
And it would be other holidays as well, it wouldn't just be for holidays. It wouldn't just be for Christmas, it would be for all, like throughout the year.
Well, I, I don't know. We would first see, did yours include, you know, Griffin all the way, you know, to, to the westernmost point?
No, no, just the City Hall. Just, just CRA.
So I definitely think that we should take what Raquel did, match it with another 50 and, and really do a global effect citywide.
That's why I said 100. Yeah. Frank, go ahead, Frank.
We, the, the budget request for 2021 has 25,000 in recreation for the tree, the tree and menorah lighting at City Hall. You know, the city center area. And there's another 53,000 in Public Services Facilities Division for what's noted as citywide. So that's 78,000 total. If you want to throw another 22 in to give you the 100, you can do that. And maybe that, but again, don't know exactly if that'll cover the whole City Hall area and then plus the whole city, not just the CRA area.
I think if we can start with 100 and speak to the vendor and if by any chance we have to come back and say, hey, we're gonna need another 12,000. But your direction is take Griffin from the westernmost point, hit Federal, Dania Beach Boulevard, Sterling?
Sterling up to, up to Lake Shore, I think.
I, I'm.
Please.
No, no.
Well, that's why I said the 40th, I, I, I'm, I'm confused now because I asked about the 25,000 and, and it was said to be done for other things. So the 25,000 is for the tree and menorah?
The 25,000 is City Hall.
Okay, so is it, is it a, is it appropriate to put all of that money in one location? Because it's hard to, to really say, okay, I see this and that and then Public Services have an amount too. So you're saying altogether, it's 78?
Yes.
Okay, so I would propose to add the additional 22, but to make sure again, before anyone goes out, that, that this board approves where it's going to go. So that all of our vision is encompassed within that.
Tell us what, what you want, we can write it down and when we sit with the vendor, if it's 115, we'll come back and say, can you support us with an additional 15? But if you want this complete corridor, tell us what you want and we'll sit with the vendor and that's what we'll give you.
Hello. When the mayor started the conversation off before, she had the right answer. We want an outside company, a company, why can't we make the contract like for every holiday? We don't want to just invest this kind of money into Christmas.
No, no, but every holiday is going to cost a little bit more. But we can find out, hey, if, if you want a certain level of lighting up the city.
Yeah, well, I would like to see it go as far as tropical acres when it comes going west.
Well, we're talking about flag banners.
Out to 441.
Yeah, no, no, to 441 even, but we have to have somebody professional to say this every year for all these holidays and then stick it in the budget.
Without a doubt, but for example, Aventura, Coral Gables, they have X amount of budget for holiday. Then say, when you say holiday, you're talking about Christmas. And then they have smaller budgets, you know, to get flags for.
That's what I was gonna say, flag poles.
Flag poles.
We had last time was also saying that every year we were going, knowing that it, it's impossible for us to cover many holidays from the beach to all the way down to, to tropical acres. It's just not in the cards for us. So whatever we're gonna decide that we can get from the, from the vendor that we go look at. We have the idea that we were gonna, every year we were gonna add in, I, I don't know what number we said, but maybe 10,000, 25,000. And this understanding that we were gonna commit to building this up till we had something that had a real wow factor that you see in the other big cities. Because we know putting up a little string of lights in one place doesn't really have a visual impact. It's something where you need a whole bunch of little balls and you need a whole bunch of little drummer men and light, you need the whole shekabane. So building it up every year, I think we talked about doing something like that. And I think that might be the only way we're really gonna reach the ultimate goal of doing it up correctly from, from the beach all the way down. Raquel?
I, I was, I just was thinking about this and I just conferred with Frank. Um, the RFP that we put out, I want to say we put it out last July. Because usually for Christmas or holiday lighting, you want to have that locked up by the summertime. We're actually kind of late now. So I don't know if the RFP would have to be done over again. Uh, and maybe Frank kind of was saying, we probably have to put it back out. But it's something to consider with the timeframe. You want to get it done as quickly as possible so that you're locked in with them for the holiday time.
Did, did the bid that you put out, did that include the annual storage cost of the decorations?
I, I think we had two options in there where you could either have them store what you purchased or if it was a rental, I think we did a two-pronged approach to it, but I can't recall. But I can provide you with the proposal that was submitted, actually all the proposals that were submitted.
Yeah, and I think we need to start now, but I think what the Vice Mayor said is, is true. Certain, New York City didn't become New York City in, in, in holiday time overnight and they kept augmenting that. The city of Coral Gables does a fantastic job. I mean, they have like soldiers like that on Miracle Mile that are like so impactful. And you know what it does? It helps businesses. I spoke to Daniel Point, already they have a budget, they're going to have something really cool for the holidays this year. And I think at least the Sterling Corridor and some of Brian will be impacted, but I think 100,000 is a good start.
Yes, I, I would like to add to that. If we can add like an art component, maybe have a contest or maybe some of the flag poles are, are drawn and designed by some of our artists and maybe the art in public places in, 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 in place, it can supplement some of those costs. Because maybe they can do like Fourth of July with some type of artistic way to, to, to put those banners up. Because every holiday isn't going to require all of these lights. You know, some of the banners can just be representative of the season. Maybe when it becomes fall, art in public places or whoever can go and, and provide some type of fall-like banners or where spring is coming. So just to make sure that that's how we're inducing art back in, you know, into the city because we do have a art in public places that we need to, to start putting into play with that.
That's a great idea. I've seen, I was in Nashville for a conference, I think last year, and they have this amazing pumpkin patch. And it's all, I mean Salem, I mean, it's all about Halloween. So I really think that's a really good idea in the art in public places to encourage this new development to maybe help us with, with those themes and help, help us fund those themes as well.
And that's, and that's, I'm not disagreeing, I think it's a great idea, but can we move it along? Because we're already after seven o'clock now, we've been here for three hours.
It's such an exciting conversation.
I know, but we can workshop this at another time or whatever, but.
So thank you, Raquel. So 100,000 to start, we begin to meet and then we have to augment it, we'll come back to you.
Yes.
And you know what? I think it's a good idea, Frank, if we just put it in, in, in one fund.
Will do.
I just want to throw something out there for the 500,000. Couple of ideas that I'd like to see us think about and, and I don't know if we want to set up another meeting or if we want to, I don't know. We can discuss it, I don't know, however you want to do it. One, I think we need to look at this building, um, this building. And start considering ways that we can maybe do some sort of an assessment on the building or whatever to determine what we can do to augment this building because it's a waste the way it is right now. There's a lot more that can be done with this building and it could be used. Is that me? It could be used, it could be used for events, like a. Is that me? It could be used. It could be used for events, like a real like real events. Um, you know, like bigger events than what we're having now. Um, and not just not just be a meeting space. And it's fine that it's a meeting space, but we and it is used for some events, but it could be a lot more. And we and we've talked about this before about the fact that this is wasted space here. I mean, we have we have water right here and it should be getting used more like that type of an event space. So that was one thought that I had. My other thought on the extra money that's out there is
Mayor, they can't hear you.
They can't? Nobody can hear me? Can you hear me now?
You gotta be like that.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, so aside from this building, the other thought would be, since we do have that Parks Master Plan that we have passed and we want to see implemented and we're going to need to go out there and put um uh on a ballot at some point for a bond. Uh, it might not be a bad idea to take a smaller park that doesn't need a huge overhaul um and maybe put the money towards that so that we have a showpiece that we can actually show people what it's going to look like. And I know this is something we had discussed previously. My thought on that would probably be Chester Bird Park because it is a smaller park, but it is in a a good spot where people see it and and it would not need a ton of money to overhaul it, I don't think. So just my two thoughts. And then then we can say this is what it would look like. This is what we're looking to do and why we want people to put money in for a bond. Um, and it would give an example and it would help sell it and it would be good for the future. So anyway, just my two thoughts on that. If anybody wants to add to it or change it or throw in their own thoughts, please feel free.
Yeah, I do. Uh, Frank, how much money is this uh is this uh Cross Park bringing in for since we're booked through every single weekend? Do you have that figured, what we brought in here at the at IT Parker?
I I can get that for you.
Sure, and it's a big amount of money. We have no weekends open at all until this stupid virus hit. Everything is booked solid. Weddings, uh all kinds. Our mitzvahs are held here. There's all kinds of things out there. So you better look about the money that's being brought in through Eric and uh Parks for this building because of the the capacity that it holds.
Vice Mayor? So I I think we all have a couple of different ideas for the for the five hundred thousand dollars. But being that we're after, we're at seven fifteen, I don't want to rush anyone. I don't want to just fumble through the ideas because I think this is very important and I think the ideas are good. And if, you know, Commissioner James, you want to say yours real quick, I I want you to have the time to elaborate on them. I don't like anyone being rushed through their ideas. So do we want to do a, how do we want to handle it? Do we want to do a second workshop and schedule that?
I definitely think we need a second one.
I think we're going to have to. I don't know that there's really any way around it. Um, I I had given dates before that I was available. You're available? I gave dates before that I was. Oh, okay. So could we have Chris work through the dates that we've, because I know we also submitted more than one date. So find a second date that uh that for the five of us can attend so that we can do a part two of this workshop and we'll start off the agenda uh with maybe this item so that we could maybe, you know,
You all have given another date. I think that's a great idea. This five hundred thousand dollars is a good chunk of money that we can really, that it could be really impactful. Um, we're all available on Friday. If you wanted to do it early after, oh, no?
I can't do Friday. I can't do this week. This week is not coming.
Okay. Can you guys do Saturday or next Monday?
Saturday.
Monday?
Can can we go through the dates because we submitted a a more than one to Chris? So can we? Can we work on it tomorrow? And if Chris doesn't have enough dates, he can just email us and we'll send him another date or two and we'll 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 go from there instead of just trying to do it right now?
Yes, absolutely. So like I just want to be sure, are all weekends out of the question for all you guys, just in case?
I'm available. I'm usually available. This Saturday, I've got multiple things.
No, no.
Because I know the back to school is a big deal. I know. Now, I know next week you can. I know that you're kind, you're busy.
Um, next week is better than the week after. The week after I am booked solid. I can't. There's nothing I can do.
This doesn't have to, this doesn't have to be done by the twenty-fifth, correct? Okay, so we have, okay, because I was under the impression.
The week is the twenty-fourth. I can't. I'm completely booked.
No, I'm saying, what I'm asking him, that it doesn't have to be done by the next commission meeting. It can it can flow after that. That's all I'm saying.
But but we have we have publication deadlines because we have to publish the budget ads before our public hearing. So we just need to fi- we we really need to finalize the budget as soon as we can.
Surely tomorrow, if Chris sends out an email, she's very good at hawking us down and nailing down a date. So I think if we each can come up with two dates and times, we can we can make it happen.
We will do it. I mean, we've been having some challenges because I know you guys have a lot going on. So we'll we'll send you a couple of dates. We'll sit back with the team and because the good thing is, you know, it could be done remotely, it could be done together, but this was very successful.
I I think for Commissioner, well, I won't speak for anyone. For for myself, it's because now I'm a homeschooling teacher. I so during the day, I'm a teacher. I'm, school gets out at three o'clock, so I can run on down here after three o'clock. Some other people might be in that position as well.
And and you know what? And 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 maybe we could do, we could do like maybe like like a six to eight.
Right.
If that's good for you guys, a six to eight and then maybe provide some snacks with a little bit more substance.
I'm also going to
Talking about August though, aren't they?
I don't know.
If next week's out for her, the week after that's out for me, that it's not going to be August.
No, yeah, and yeah. What was that commission we just added here?
Because the mayor can't do it the week after and I can't do it next week. That's what that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying. It's not going to be August.
It might not be August.
But what I'm trying to say is, is there is the remain, today's Tuesday, is the remainder of of this week a possibility?
Because we already gave this date for this. I already booked other things and I I literally do things during the day and at night all week this year.
We'll 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 do our best. We'll definitely do our
Okay, and then I'm I'm also going to get with um the CRA because I think we need a CRA workshop as well. I don't want to
I don't know if we are. I just got the budget today. So as soon as I look at it, I don't know if I'm going to need one. Do you need one?
I I think, I mean, I I would suggest we all had one.
Okay, so do we want, can we?
I'll have her, I'll have her contact everybody. I just wanted to throw it out while we were all out here at the same time.
All right, can we adjourn? I guess we're adjourned.
Yeah. Via Ring Central, is is we could do it with other staff participating that need to be or whatever, just in case?
Okay. We can do it virtually. Anybody who can't be in person.